Are you ready? Are you ready for us? Stephanie, are you ready? Take your time, take your time. We're gonna call to order the Effingham County Board of Commissioners meeting this August 20th, 2024 at 5:00. We'll begin with roll call. Commissioner Floyd.
Here.
Commissioner Burdette.
Here.
Commissioner Corbett's here. Commissioner DeLoach.
Here.
Commissioner Kiefer.
Here.
So we're all in attendance and we have a quorum. If anyone would please rise for the invocation and remain standing as I lead it in the Pledge Allegiance to Our Flag. Gracious Father, we are so thankful again to be able to gather in this community with our constituents and the leadership around this room, between our commission and our staff and our clerk and just all those who are here tonight to seek your wisdom and to make decisions that will be pleasing to you and will bless our constituents. So guide us in our wisdom, Father, as we look to make the appropriate decisions. Continue to pray for those who are struggling and suffering after the storm. And thank you again for all the wonderful emergency staff that you provided that did such a great job in keeping our county moving and well. Once again, we are so thankful for our community. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have our agenda, it's the next item. And I understand there's a couple of corrections or additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have several items requiring your attention tonight. As an addition to new business, this is on page five. It is a plat, consideration to approve a minor subdivision. Final plat for the cottages located on Little McCall Road, Zone R1, map number 392 parcel two. This is item number 23 under new business. Under planning board, this is gonna be on page five as well. Items number one and two for Neil McKenzie for Carson Company Unlimited LLC to rezone 25.77 acres plus or minus, located at 1369 Ebenezer Road from AR1 to PDMU to allow for mixed-use development. The applicant has requested to postpone this item until September 17th. That is one and two under planning board.
To September 17th?
September 17th.
Okay.
And on page nine of your agenda, items number 38 and 39 for Mr. Greg Coleman as agent for ground control development. This is a conditional use on Highway 80 for a commercial trucking, truck parking. The applicant has requested to postpone this item to September 3rd.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with a noted changes.
Second. Very good, we have a motion by Mr. DeLoach. Second by Mr. Burdette. All in favor of the agenda with the changes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, we have our agenda. I want to welcome everyone tonight to the meeting. Comments shall pertain to agenda items only, please, should you wish to make remarks. Clearly come to the microphone, clearly state your name and then begin to speak. If you keep your comments two to three minutes, that really helps everyone have a chance to speak to an item that would like to speak. All the items for correspondence for All the items for correspondence for this meeting tonight, for the agenda packages on the county website. It's also in the clerk's office, and hope you've had a chance to review that already to participate at the appropriate time. And before we move into an appearance at 5:10, we have a very special presentation. See if I see Ms. Beth here. Yes, she is.
See that.
Okay. Yeah, uh, Ms. Beth Mosley, if you won't mind coming to the microphone so we can recognize you. She is our probate judge since 2009, has done an outstanding job, and she's retiring this year. And so we just want to recognize you for a moment for your public service. It's not easy. It's, it's a lot going on in this growing county, but we appreciate you.
It is.
And so I'm gonna ask the clerk if she would, uh, read the, uh...
You wanna come down for a picture?
We do, but why don't you, uh, go ahead and, and, well, we can, we can come down, you can read it while, let's all go down, we'll get a picture. Okay? And she'll read it while we hold it.
Wait for the, um, the thing. So your recognition reads, Effingham County Board of Commissioners. Beth Rhine Mosley, January 2009, July 2024. Thank you for your exceptional work and dedication to Effingham County. Presented this 20th day of August 2024.
Ms. Beth, I'd say we, we're gonna miss you, but they will, but I won't because we'll be leaving at the same time. Alrighty. And with that, we have a presentation tonight from Stuart Williams to discuss ordinance to allow for service and emotional support animals. Mr. Williams, come ahead.
Good afternoon. I've forwarded some information to Stephanie Johnson, to the clerk, uh, with links to the ADA, with links to Fair Housing Act and, Act and HUD's website. But I'm here today to ask for your help with zoning laws for R1 zone properties that currently restrict assistant animals. I was directed to speak to you by Tim Callinan after I met with him and the zoning and planning board about assistant animals that I have. We, the people of Effingham County, need the zoning and planning board to have the ability to make exceptions to zoning laws to allow these types of animals without having to involve the magistrate court. The ADA allows presently for trained dogs or trained miniature horses to be designated as service animals after training. Yet the current zoning laws for R1 properties in Effingham do not allow exceptions for miniature horses. Yet federal disability laws, HUD and the Fair Housing Act require housing providers, HOAs, and zoning boards to modify or make exceptions to existing policies and laws that apply to animals and make reasonable accommodations where necessary. For assistant animals that are different than the service animals, like emotional support animals, HUD and the Fair Housing Act allow for many different types of animals, including but not limited to dogs, cats, hamsters, goats, and birds. So these animals require reasonable accommodations similar to the above service animal accommodations, but they're not governed by the ADA. In both cases, the pertinent laws and entities require the party seeking the accommodation, as well as the party that could grant the accommodation, enter into a good faith, interactive process. In most cases, the party that can grant the accommodation can only deny the reasonable accommodation if it will require any undue administration or financial hardship. So as stated above, you know, my family currently have dwarf goats as service animals for my 11-year-old, uh, daughter and myself. My daughter's in special education classes due to a few learning disabilities and processing disorders. After her school purchased some goats last year for the kids to assist with their care, and we heard feedback from their teachers on how they made a difference in her care, we decided to get her an assistance goat. We choose a two, chose a two-day-old goat for her so she could bottle-feed, uh, her, the goat, and build a stronger bond with her. While we were picking hers out, I found out that they also help with some of my stress, anxiety. As I'm OCD, um, don't really care for cats, dogs, the goat's a little bit different for me. Don't know why, but it's helped with some of my issues as well. Um, we bought both goats at two days old and bottle-fed them and raised them over the last seven months, and I've built a strong bond with both of them. Before purchasing the goat, purchasing the goats, I had called the zoning board to inquire about goats. Um, gave them my address. They said that we could have the goats. But then later, speaking to Tim Callinan, the zoning, the planning board, whoever told me this, told me incorrectly. So as R1, we're not supposed to have the goats, even though they're dwarf goats and probably about that high, at max height. And this, I did the same thing for chickens, and whenever I got the chickens last year, there wasn't a chicken permit. But now there's, I found out also during that same meeting that now there's a chicken permit as of April this year, where you have to get a permit for the chickens, you can only have so many. So I'm here today because of the process I've gone through with code enforcement, planning, zoning, and Tim Callinan. Now, I appreciate the chance to speak to you today about these zoning opportunities. At the cost of my daughter's emotional well-being is priceless. Removing her support animals for, from her and telling her she has to find another one will probably adversely affect her well-being and possibly cause her to regress.
Can I, matter of fact, I interrupted.
Yeah.
That's not gonna happen, right? We've approved, you've approved the animal that his daughter has right now?
No, we, we have no authority to do that. It violates, it has to go through a variance process.
I thought he said something about the small goat, okay.
No, no, it's, uh, we, I, I, I have no idea, um, uh, who we might have talked to. Um, I mean, and since it was a phone call, we have no record of it. We just know that it, uh, currently violates the, uh, current ordinance for R1.
Alright, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanna make sure, go ahead, go ahead.
No, that's fine. And Tim had called me, uh, come up here, same thing he just told you, that he has no authority to approve a variance or an exception, that I would have to come to y'all and, you know, possibly seek some exception in the zoning laws. That way they can provide a, uh, vehicle for exception or modification as needed, so.
Okay.
Alright, so after seeing the progress she has made in school and out, it would be heartbreaking to see this regression if it happened. My daughter's teachers have told us on multiple occasions how much the goats have helped her in many different ways. You know, take public speaking, for example, she would never stand up in class and speak about anything until we bought the goats along with a few other pets. Um, I say a few lightly, we've got several pets for her and for the classes. At first, she would only stand up in class to speak about the animals we have in science, then social studies, and this has progressed to other classes. You know, she's in middle school now, just started last week, and she's doing excellent, I mean, because of these animals. And that's the only thing I can attribute it to. Um, it has helped her so much that the teacher, teachers have asked us if we would be willing to come to the school and to share the animals with the special education kids. And this is something that I've talked to Mr. Callinan as well about, we're starting a nonprofit. That way we can take some of the animals that we have, we're trying to get some special permits. That way we can have prairie dogs, stuff like that, and we can take them to the school and help the other kids as well. From what I've been told, allowing us to have the emotional support animals by making a reasonable accommodation will not cause any undue administrative and/or financial burden to the county or its operation. What can we do to allow the exceptions, not just for myself, but for other current occupants of the county as well as future occupants?
Very good. Now, I'm, I'm glad to hear about your daughter's progress, and, uh, we probably need to look at the support animals that we can go ahead and amend the ordinance for. I, I think I heard you say something about you wouldn't want a business of, of, of raising the support animals in R1. But I understand what you're saying, if it was something small, that's, uh, it's not a dog or a cat, that, that's the norm.
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, I think it's something we need to look at, and if you've got that information, did, do you have the document that he just shared with you, Tim, as well?
I didn't, Tim has...
They may, Development Services.
Okay. Just make sure that you email that to our Development Services or to our, uh, manager.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll look at that. We, we have every month or every other month, we have a workshop right here. We can make that one of our topics to start looking at that, so we can make a plan. Now, we may need to do something in the short-term basis, I don't know, I, I, I'll get with Development Services, find out if, if we need to delay 30 days or 45 days, any action on your current animal, so that we can have a chance to review that.
Yes, sir.
So we'll see if we can't do, Tim, if you make a note of that, we might need to do something on our next agenda to protect him from having to, to lose the success you've had with your daughter.
Yes, sir.
And then we can look at that and see if we can, can help you out further.
Okay.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Besides sending the documents, what, what would be my next steps on following up with this?
Say again?
Said besides sending the documents to, you know, Tim and to the clerk, what would be my next, uh, step following up?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, um, yeah, if you'll get that to the Development Services, I'll have it, and then we'll try to get it on a workshop agenda. Do we have a workshop at the next meeting? When's the next, 4 o'clock? September 17th. So we'll try to give staff some direction about what to do before we get it on an agenda for you.
Out of curiosity, what, what led, what, uh, was there a complaint, or what led you, I guess, to come?
So there was, code enforcement came to the house on June 10th, said that they had a, a noise complaint, which I wasn't there, I called Lindsey Frymuth back afterwards. And, you know, like I talked to Tim and them about it, it's just, I don't understand the noise complaint because I have dogs, you know, German Shepherd in the back, everybody else has dogs.
And last night at the full moon, they were all howling.
Yeah, probably. Yeah, so they're a lot louder than the goats, so.
I, I think your request is good. Did you want any more information?
No, no, I was just curious, you know what?
I, I'll get Development Services to speak to it tonight, but we got a long agenda. We probably need to meet with them. I'll try to connect with them tomorrow on this and just get some ball rolling for you, and we'll get back to you.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate your time. Thank you so much. Alright.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you would backtrack and go to approve your minutes, please.
I did skip over the minutes, thank you. Item number six on the minute approval, consideration to approve the August 6, 2024 teleconference commission meeting minutes. Any corrections or additions, or motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DeLoach, second by Mr. Floyd, to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, the minutes are approved unanimously. Did I miss any other items? Good job. Alright. We have our consent agenda next. Uh, this section includes all routine items for which there will be no discussion. Should a need arise for discussion or debate, the item can be removed to the appropriate area of the agenda. So I'll read it out, and the commission that want to remove any items will make a motion to approve. Item number one on the consent agenda is consideration to approve the George Pacific Community Support Funding Application. Item number two is consideration to approve to renew the lease agreement with Crown Castle for the cell phone, cell tower located at 247 Church Road. Item number three is consideration to approve an assemblage permit for Medrick Farms at 580 Ralph Ron Road, beginning September 28th, 2024 through October 27th, 2024, on Saturday and Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. This is map number 411, parcel number 24. Item number four, under the consent agenda, is consideration to approve an assemblage permit for Matt Key's Fund to Hold a Deputy Duck Derby located at 1002 North Pine Street, Springfield, on Saturday, October 5th, 2024, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Item number five, consideration to approve to renew an agreement with the Gas South for natural gas services for multiple county buildings. Item number six, consideration to approve a grant application to ACCG Group Self-Inurance Workers Compensation Fund, Employee Safety Grant Application. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. DeLoach, to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously. Move to unfinished business. Item number one is consideration to approve the second reading of an ordinance to amend Part II Official Code, Appendix C, Zoning Ordinance, Section 3.17, excavation, mining, ponds, uh, and field of land and/or state federal jurisdictional waters or wetlands, and 3.17A, ponds of the FEM County Code of Ordinances, ordinances. The first reading was 7/16/24. Is there a motion to approve the second reading?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DeLoach, second by Mr. Floyd, to approve the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously. Item number two, under unfinished business, is consideration to approve the second reading of an ordinance to amend Part II Official Code, Appendix C, Zoning Ordinance, 3.41 Swimming Pools, Private, Community, or Club of the FEM County Code of Ordinances. First reading was July 16, 2024. Real quickly, just wanna make sure the things I brought up were in there. It looks like they are. The, uh, there is no restriction on the front yard if you have a certain size lot in it, in R1 and so forth, right? We changed that.
AR1?
Hmm? AR1 or R1, I mean, well, it's gotta be like five or 10 acres or more, a hundred foot back, you did that. The other thing I saw, um, I, I'm not sure, make sure, the pools that are private, where they do private lessons, other than getting that occupational license, they do not have to comply now, like the original wording.
Correct, yes, sir.
With the, with the community pools.
Um, we do have two different options for y'all to pick from. Um, if y'all wanna do the variants, or if you wanna do the design standards for the pools being allowed in the front yard. And I was thinking of the Eastern plan or two.
Let me pull that up. I, I remember seeing there were some options.
Chairman, this was your concern, so I'll defer to your thoughts.
Yeah, I, I, I think I saw them in there, but I didn't relate them to the, to the options. And that's what I need to do, is relate to the options to call for the motion, sounds like.
10 or more acres, 100 foot setback from front property line.
Alright, approving amendment of code ordinances, 341 swimming pools, private, community, or club with design standards for the front yard pools. Is that what I read? I mean, what I read looked fine. That, that, that has everything I just said, right? And it doesn't, doesn't require private pools who are doing swimming lessons to have to bill them to a community standard.
The only t, difference between the two is one has, where you have to apply for a variance for the front yard pools, and one has, um, specific design standards for the pools in the front yard now.
Essentially, it's by right or by variance.
That's right.
Yeah.
It can still be done both ways.
Either, so I'll entertain a motion for either alternative one or two then. I'm good with either one.
I'll make a motion for alternative one.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion for alternative one by Mr. DeLoach, second by Mr. Burdette. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I've gotta recuse myself on the next three items due to a banking relationship.
Alright. The clerk will note that Mr. DeLoach has recused himself and has left the, um, platform. Item number three, under unfinished business, consideration to approve Amendment 7 to the Agreement of EOM Operations to Perform Public Work-Related Task. This was postponed from 7/16/2024.
Good afternoon. My name is Danielle Carver, and I'm the Procurement and Capital Projects Manager. The county has utilized EOM operations to perform public work support. This assures timely and complete services to the community. The county has utilized EOM operations to perform public work support. This assures timely and complete services to the community in the most effective, cost-effective manner. This amendment modifies Section two point three point five of the agreement to reflect the current lift station. The base fee will remain the same, and staff recommends alternative one.
Question. The base fee of two point seven million dollars stays the same?
Yes.
What's that? Next line says, recommend that public work services be performed via contract with EOM operations. That used to be part of the contract, the two point seven million. Is that separate now?
I believe we broke it out several years ago in Kristin May, when we, when we restructured this contract.
It was like, like the public work side was like nine hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars at one time.
It's all been one contract, so it's still water, sewer, wastewater treatment plant, fleet, that sort of thing. So that value is for all of those. It just doesn't have the engineering. So it's still one contract for all of those services, and that hasn't changed.
So what they're breaking out is just the engineering?
The engineering is different. The engineering, MS four, those are different tasks.
Okay, because it said recommend public works services be performed via contract, didn't say engineering. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Engineering was never part of the original.
It was always a separate.
But when I read that there, it sounded like we're taking the public works out. It's going to be by contract only, yet the price didn't go down from two point nine. Thinking surely that nine hundred eighty-seven thousand just didn't.
Now, the individual departments fluctuated. Fleet, we dropped one person just because you're now using enterprise. Water, sewer, wastewater, public works, they all fluctuated based on just cost of living and a few changes that we made in the budget, but the overall value stayed the same.
Sounds good. What I didn't find in the detail was that breakout in the original contract. It showed all four of those items. If I'd have seen that.
One of the, I think they're all in different amendments, because there's multiple amendments, so that's what it is. But it's all of those departments.
So that's the total contract for the same areas of service.
Except for the fleet reducing.
All right. The chairman is not confused any longer, so have a motion for alternative one or any other discussion?
Make motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Kiefer for alternative one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously. Item number four, consideration to approve Task Order Number Nine with EOM Operations under the Master Service Agreement for Civil Engineering Services.
Yes, sir. This task order requests the continuation of services offered by EOM and includes water and sewer site plan review, municipal separate storm sewer system compliance services, and long-term monitoring for watershed protection services. Staff recommends alternative one.
And the hundred ninety-two thousand four water and sewer site plan review, is that a set amount or is that, that's the maximum we will spend in that area? Set amount? Whether we review one plan or forty-six plans?
Yes, yes. So what we did is we reduced the engineering task order for just, that way it'd be just water and sewer. Jonathan's doing the streets and drainage, and then it took out the capital projects, because you have Thomas and Hutton. So it decreased it from, the original was, let me find that for you, three oh one to two forty-one is now the base contract. And same thing, the next one, same contract, just task order versus.
Yeah, I have a problem with that, too. They're clear to me. Okay. Any other questions, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
Make motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Burdette, second, Mr. Floyd for alternative one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously. And item number five, consideration to approve Amendment Four, the extension of the Master Service Agreement for Professional Services for EOM Operations.
Yes, sir. The scope and services will be defined in task orders to be approved by the board, the renewal updates of the term through June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Staff recommends alternative one.
And I have no questions on this one.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve alternative one if there's no discussion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Kiefer, second, Mr. Floyd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously. And then item number six under unfinished business, consideration to approve the second reading to amend Appendix C, Article Nine, Section five point one, one point two, to allow for the addition of truck, trailer, parking, as a conditional use in B three zoning. First reading was July sixteenth, and the clerk will note that Mr. Deloach has come back up to the platform. Is there any question, discussion, or motion for a second reading?
It's okay. I would be okay with this if we just limited this to truck stops. Because I can't see doing commercial trucks, eighty thousand pounds, you know, behind anything else but a bona fide truck stop. I think we may be getting, opening up Pandora's Box here. If we started doing this in all, all of B three. I have no problem with truck stops, what they're for, but I've seen in a lot of different places, like even in the middle of a rink and where people rent out spaces for big trucks, just anywhere.
So that's the reason they came, I think, as a conditional use. The specific site they're looking at was over on Highway eighty, which in the future land development, that's all supposed to be commercial. And they're, they've, the group that's asked for this is looking at where the old Eden Junkyard was. They've cleaned that up. Currently, Georgia Power's storing a lot of, it's a lay-down yard for Georgia Power, and they're looking to park trucks and trailers, not containers.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's the reason, being a condition, you know, I think maybe it would work. But, because I really don't want to zone anything else industrial on that quarter.
We just got to realize when we do that, we're putting in an industrial application, a commercial.
Well, it's a conditional use. It's not going to be a permitted use.
I understand that.
So it has to have a reason why. I mean, just a thought.
I'm just trying to avoid a hundred different variances coming down the pipe.
More than just parking, I'd have an issue, but, but anyway.
If you have a trucking company, essentially you have a building and a parking, parking area. I mean, that's what I do for a living. That's all, it's the same thing.
The good news is we don't have to approve it if they come forward.
That's true. That's true.
We can make it go to industrial.
Just some thoughts. I mean, we'll have to do that, but I'm just trying to keep it.
If they, if they were to say, we're going to rent a couple of spots, no, no, this is, this is.
That's what happens over and over again. You know, you start seeing that and it's popping up. There's a need for it, but there's also ways around it, you know, if you're trying to build a small company or something like that.
I guess the only, this, the only other option was for this person to have to consider zoning it industrial, and that may not be appropriate either.
True.
So it does, you know, it kind of finds a, a way without having a full rezoning. So it'll use that's really not appropriate.
Without getting yourself.
Just as a counter.
I guess it'd have to be the use. If you vetted it already, I mean, definitely trust your judgment.
State route. I mean, I wouldn't agree to this on a county road, probably, but.
I know you vet these things, so I'm good with it. Just trying to look for the future.
Yeah, absolutely. That's good. Any other further discussion? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion. We approve alternative one.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Burdette for alternative one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously. All right, we're gonna, we got a long new business agenda, and I'll just take it one by one until we, we're going to have to pause for executive session in about five minutes. Tim, are there any particular items you want to address first, so that if someone's here or staff needed to dismiss? Because when we come back, we're going to have to do public hearings, so the new business will not start again till probably seven thirty. So it won't make people hanging around for new business that long.
Mr. Chairman, while he's looking it over, I will tell you, the moratorium was advertised for six p.m. as a public hearing, so it will go along with the planning board item.
Okay. So item number one's going to be at six o'clock. Okay, that takes care of item number one.
Yeah, I think if, I'm sorry, you know, if, if we, if I tried to cut this down based on, based on staff, you know, we've, we've got a, quite a few, quite a, quite a few items on the procurement, so it wouldn't make sense to take them. So I would probably say if we can put eleven, twelve, twenty-one, and eight.
That's about all I can do before we have to go to executive session.
Yeah. That, that.
Can I see the chamber chair tonight? Were you here for a particular item?
On the moratorium.
We're here to listen to the state and the results of the proposed moratorium.
Okay, that's going to be at six o'clock anyway. Okay, very good. All right, I'm going to jump down to eight and move forward from there with the items that Tim asked me to address. And then we'll take a motion for executive session. We'll be back at six. We can be timing on our planning board. And then it's up to Tim to let the rest of you go whenever he wants to let you go. Okay? All right. So item number eight on the new business, we'll address it next. Consideration to approve an ordinance to amend Part Two Official Code Appendix C, Article Nine, Section nine point three, procedures for calling a public hearing of the FEM County Code of Ordinances.
Hi, how you doing? Kimberly Bartlett, Community Potter. So staff recommends approval for the amendment for the reason that the current ordinance is not aligned with the state zoning procedure law. According to House Bill fourteen oh five, revisions, revisions to zoning procedures law, it states at least fifteen, but not more than forty-five days, the local government shall publish in a newspaper a notice for hearing. Our ordinance currently says at least sixteen, but not more than forty-four, so we just want to correct it.
Breeding in compliance with the recent legislation. Yep. All right. I don't think there's any discussion bringing in compliance. Is there a motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Burdette, second, Mr. Floyd for alternative one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, while she's up there, can she do the second item on the agenda, too?
Which one?
Can she do the second item on the new business?
Public hearing? The public hearing approval?
No, it's a resolution.
It's a public hearing, yeah. It's not a public hearing.
Not a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, it's what?
No, it says public hearing and approval.
It does actually say public hearing and approval.
Well, it is, yeah.
Okay, but it's not a public hearing. We don't need that. All right. It is a public hearing, so we got to hear from the public.
If there's any, yes.
Do we have time to do that?
No one will speak on this.
We'll take it real quick and see if there's any comments, or I'll have to delay it a little bit later. A public hearing and approval resolution twenty-four dash oh twenty-nine to transmit the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four capital improvement element CIE, annual update to the Coastal Regional Commission and Department of Community Affairs for review. And I tell you what, make it short. I've got some questions on this one, though. It says, the form says twenty-five to twenty-nine at the top. We stop at twenty-four, and I don't see Loop A, Loop B that we're in progress right now. Should we not have these items in there?
These are the items that are associated with the impact fees. So if the impact fees are not, if it's not being used for the impact fees, it's not going to be listed on here. So there was just a handful of items that were using impact fees were, and.
Water and sewer impact fees?
The remainder of the water and sewer impact fees. Mark, am I correct on that?
He's right there.
The water and sewer impact fees, we fully expended a number of years back, so there was just a little bit of, I think, recreation impact fees left in fiscal year twenty-four.
This is not for water and sewer impact fees, because the Loop A and Loop B are very expensive, and that would greatly impact our impact fees. It's not on the schedule.
Yeah, it shouldn't be, because.
They're not being funded by.
They're not being funded by impact fees.
Okay, so all those water and sewer things are no issue?
Yeah, we, that's right.
Okay, that solves it. All right. That's my question. Is there a motion to approve alternative one?
They'll have a public hearing.
How far you're a public hearing?
Open a public hearing. Any comments related to this item, for or against? See no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. Motion for alternative one?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Floyd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I'm not going to get through all these items, Mr. Tim. Item number eleven, consideration to approve the site plan as submitted by FEM County Board of Education, located at seven twenty-four Blue Jay Road, Elementary School Phase One, Zoned AR1, AR2, and R1, map number four thirty-two, parcel number forty, forty A, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three A, and map number four one four, parcel number three A.
Hi, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Sapp. I am the Land Use Policy Analyst. The county planning staff has reviewed and approved the application and recommends alternative one of the site plan for seven two four Blue Jay Road Elementary School Phase One with conditions. A copy of the staff report is in your packet. The site plan meets site plan and ordinance requirements with the following conditions. Access points shall adhere to the most recent Blue Jay traffic study. Approval is based on design and is conditional pending EOM lift station design and school installation. Site approval is also pending an updated landscape plan showing reforestation of buffers on site. Staff recommends alternative one.
All right, any question or discussion from the board?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Burdette, second, Mr. Deloach for alternative one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously. Consideration, item number twelve, consideration to approve a quote from Next Gen Security related to access control and security camera expansion for the administration building.
Good evening. Noel Webb, Director of IT. Staff recommends approval to expand the existing access control and security camera system at the FNM County Administration Building to accommodate facility, facility growth and enhance overall security. This project includes increasing access control points, adding security cameras, and upgrading the software system for improved functionality and scalability.
And we did bid this?
Yes, we did.
All right. Any question, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloach, second, Mr. Burdette for alternative one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously. And then item twenty-one.
Twenty-one for this?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, right?
Yeah, twenty-one for this, yeah.
Consideration to approve the first reading to amend Part Two Official Code, Chapter Thirty, Environment, Article Number Six, Wetlands, Section Thirty dash two forty-six, judicial wetlands determination required of the FEM County Code of Ordinances.
Good evening. Elizabeth Sapp, Land Use, Land Use Policy Analyst. The county planning staff suggests clarification and additional wording to the current wetlands ordinance. So in addition to reviewing site plans for wetlands, floodplain, and zoning compliance, part of my job also includes reviewing ordinance. A copy of the staff report is included in your packet as well. Staff's recommended changes include adding residential and non-residential wording to major subdivisions and non-residential properties, requiring a written determination letter from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers prior to site plan approval that determines wetlands are or are not present in any major subdivision or any non-residential property. If wetlands are not present in any major subdivision or any non-residential property, the plat is to be recorded by a licensed surveyor, who shall then submit both a plat and a letter indicating their findings approval prior to county acceptance, adding residential wording to minor subdivision and simple subdivision properties. Staff recommends alternative number one.
Very good. Is there any questions, discussion?
This wouldn't apply to individuals, it's just subdivisions.
Yes, sir. Major subdivisions and commercial properties.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Burdette, second, Mr. Kiefer, I mean, Mr. Deloach to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We're going to have to conduct the rest of our business, because we need a brief executive session. So I need, and we'll be back at six o'clock for the public hearings, if you're here for that. And then after public hearings, we'll complete our, our new business.
So I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel, property, and pending litigation.
Got a motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, we are in executive session.
If I can have your attention, we're going to go back into regular session. Do you have a motion to go back into regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Deloge, to go back into regular session. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. He knows we are back in regular session. We're going to move to our planning board items and then we'll come back to new business when we finish all our planning board items. The first item for planning board is actually a new business item that we advertised as a planning, uh, public hearing. This is number one on a new business consideration to approve resolution twenty-four dash oh twenty-four imposing a moratorium on rezoning for R one, R two, R three, R four, R five, B one, B two, B three, L dash I H dash, I'm sorry, L dash one, H dash one, and all planned development districts for the, for classification. Mr. Tim, you taking that one? Or Steve?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Steve Cantler, Director of Development Services. So this resolution has been reviewed by the attorney, um, who added some items into it. And so it is just the rezonings. It's not conditional use. It's not variances. It's not site plan approval. It is not related to subdivision. It is not related to preliminary plat approval or final plat approval. It's not, um, anything that those categories fall under. This is just rezonings. So we are currently working on the future land use map. We are currently working on the existing zoning map. We are working on, um, three remaining, three or four remaining articles of the zoning ordinance. So we've done, you guys have approved about six or seven of those. So we're finishing those up. Uh, one of those has to do with land use classification districts and the, uh, what goes on in there. So we're working on that. And then, um, so those are the things that we kind of would like to finish. Uh, inside those zoning classifications, there's explanations for R one, um, through PD. And we've sat down and, and are, um, through some of those, we're through some of the Rs. Um, however, to help speed up the process, we can get through some of the, um, ones that are a little less complicated, like the B ones, the B two, B three, and things like that. We could get through those quicker. We can bring them, you know, before you, if you want to get those done, if you implement the moratorium. So we're more than willing to do that and that's something we can get done. Um, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, uh, and on that, um, what we're basically saying is that, um, for the lower hanging fruit, for the things that don't require a lot of modifica- modification in the, um, uh, in the land use classification categories like B one, B two, B three, um, that we can then go to the next meeting, bring it for you, and then request that those, uh, that those, uh, land, uh, land use classifications get approved. And then we can then request that those, I, that those items at the same meeting be removed, um, from the moratorium. Uh, we think that the things that we're going to need some time on, the things that we're going to want to involve, um, not just you all, but the planning board stakeholders on is the, uh, is the land use classifications, uh, related to, uh, residential, uh, particularly, uh, the more dense classes of residential. Uh, and so those, um, we would just like, uh, a little bit of breathing room, um, so that we can, uh, we can get through that in a deliberate process rather than having to feel that we're trying to rush it through, uh, and not get it right. The date that we put on this is, um, uh, is six months because when we did this before, um, about three years ago, um, uh, when we did a moratorium on R six, uh, and R three, um, we did continually have to extend that, uh, as we were trying to, uh, work our way through the zoning text. Uh, and so we did put a, uh, time period in there that's probably a little bit longer than we need. But then at the same time, we put in the, um, we put in the moratorium that, uh, if we, uh, if you all approve the zoning text prior to that, that is also a trigger for term, for termination of the moratorium. Uh, so if we were able to get this done, uh, by the end of the year, the more, uh, and all of the zoning classifications and the, um, and the zoning ordinance gets approved by the end of the year, uh, then that's when the moratorium will end. Uh, and so, uh, and if we get through one of the zoning classes like the R one, uh, early, we can again, just like we did with the B, uh, just like we were recommending with the B ones, uh, the B zonings, uh, we can bring that to you individually and remove that as well. Uh, so, um, but that's the, um, that's the premise here is that, um, uh, we've got some changes, um, that are going to be put before you in the zoning ordinance. We'd like, um, we'd like some conformity with, um, uh, with those, uh, future rezoning. So that's why we're asking for the temporary moratorium, uh, just while we get through that, uh, that process of rewriting that text.
So is this a date specific or just six months from August twentieth or August seventh? Which, which date are we using?
There is a date in it of February sixth, but that would need to be rem- moved to February twentieth because of the change in the, because of Debbie, yeah.
So it's, it's either or. It's either February twentieth.
Or six months.
Or.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's either February twentieth or, uh, when, uh, when you approve the zoning text.
When we approve the zoning text. Okay. That's the extended time. Okay.
What we're going to really have to stay on task with are the overlay districts. We're going to have those open houses.
That's right. And you know, the, the, and it's not, that's, and it's not just the Rs. It's also the, um, the, the overlay districts. There's a couple of them. Uh, commercial cor- corridor overlay districts, historical overlay districts, um, related to Ebenezer. And also the, um, uh, the mixed use zoning ordinances and the PD zoning ordinances, um, that, uh, that we just got to get through and get right.
Well, I think the biggest thing that's going to help with is that we're trying to process a lot of development and request. And when you try to do that and improve the ordinances to protect our county and have the, the, the right, um, combination of uses, it's hard to do all that. You're going to miss something. So the breathing room is going to be good for our staff. I would say that I don't think it's going to slow down a lot of the construction because we've got over three thousand houses on the books now that can be built, probably about that number, don't we?
What's that?
About three thousand.
It's about thirty-six hundred, I think, is, uh, is how many we have obligated.
Constituents, the thing was suddenly there's not going to be any construction going on. This is just going to be a chance for us to, to catch our breath, our staff, and, uh, complete some of the things we've been working on for a good while. But it's hard to complete it when you grow in so fast. So anyway, thank you.
Yes.
I saw the chamber was here with those others, entertain, entertain a couple of comments. I'll start with the chamber and I'll come back to you, Mr. Mike.
Anyone for that matter, yeah.
Poison's loud enough. I really don't need the microphone, but.
But you do.
Thank you.
I do. Yes. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Um, from the chamber's perspective, we appreciate your time and your diligence. And we appreciate the time that Mr. Callanan has spent with us, helping us to understand it and its roots and its foundations and what a proposed moratorium will do for, um, our county moving forward. Only thing that I really want to say on the record is please consider the chamber a stakeholder and definitely tap into us and utilize us. Um, we are the voice of business for this community and we'd love to share those thoughts with you on an ongoing basis. So thank you for always keeping us in mind.
Thank you, Susan. Appreciate it. Mr. Mike, you had some comments?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah. That was Susan from the chamber. Yeah, Mike, start with your name if you would.
It's a tough act to follow.
You can start with your names for the record.
Mike Backware, representing the Home Builders Association of Greater Savannah, which is Chatham, Bryan, Effingham, and Liberty. We're here to address the moratorium. Uh, moratorium is not a word that we like to hear. Uh, obviously with home builders in our name, we are in the development and home building business. And anytime we hear the word moratorium, the hair stands up on the back of our neck. Uh, and we view it as quite a draconian measure. Uh, we equate it to basically turning off the lights, rolling up sidewalks, uh, and stop doing business in those jurisdictions uh, that opt to impose a moratorium. Uh, I think I'm, I'm very pleased to hear that this will be somewhat of a moving, rolling moratorium. Uh, and as you complete the work that is going to be done on virtually all of the districts, uh, that we may see the moratorium on those particular components lifted. Uh, I, I will observe that the growth is not going to stop. We have a wall of jobs coming into the region and a large number of jobs with a large number of families. And those folks are going to be looking for places to live. And even though you have thirty-six hundred units in the pipeline, uh, that pipeline takes a long time to unfold. And so by hitting the pause button, you're putting a space in that timeline. And if folks are not ready to move on those existing ERUs that are out there and are looking for property with a moratorium, they're not going to be able to look to Effingham. They're going to look perhaps to Rankin. They're going to look perhaps to Springfield. They're going to look to Chatham, Cooler, Bryan, Bullock, Scriven, et cetera. So I hope that you view this through that lens, that that basically takes you out of the wedding market, takes you out.
I'm okay with that right now.
Uh, I can see that. Uh, and as I said, the development is going to continue. Uh, the families are going to continue coming to the area. Uh, I'm pleased to hear, uh, that there will be a stakeholders group, uh, that will be involved in this process. And as the people, representing the people that have probably the largest stakes in this, uh, representing a number of the landowners, representing the developers, the builders, and all of the crafts and trades that are associated with putting butts in beds. Uh, we offer the resources that we have from our members to sit down with your staff, your very able staff, to sit down and try to work so through some of these issues on how best to implement residential duplexes, uh, multi-family apartments, and built-to-rent subdivisions as you move through this process. So I thank you for giving me time, uh, to be here with you and thank you for allowing me to be with you this weekend at your retreat as well. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Appreciate it. And I think we, we look forward to your, you know, input from the association so we can get the stakeholders involved in, in the final, finalizing some of this information. But once again, it's a pause on the zoning, not the construction.
Right.
With thirty-six hundred units, I'm sure there's going to be seven, eight hundred or a thousand units that's going to start being built in the next few months, so.
Our people are in business to build homes.
That's right. So we're, we're not going to be hurting plumbers or, uh, insulators or framers or whatever.
Understand. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment at this point?
Sure.
Real quick, um, respond to some of the things that Mike said. I appreciate it. Appreciate your kindness and, and willingness to understand at least what we're trying to do. Uh, and for me, and I think for a lot of us, we're trying to look at what we've done so far.
Right.
And what went right and what went wrong and how we can fix that. And I- And I think that's why the pause is so necessary because it's not easy to do and you can't do it in a couple of weeks. Throw the zoning ordinance together and boom, you're, you're, you're good. It's gonna take some time. The other part, you really mentioned, um, giving everybody a chance, all the stakeholders, the people, to, to put their input in, the developers, the realtors, everybody would have a chance to, to really help us shape this into something so we've got a beautiful community moving forward. So, you know, those things are really, really important to me. I think it's a great, great time to do that. I don't know any other way to do it properly. Otherwise, you continually fighting a battle. And you, you mentioned the hair raising on the back of the neck when you mentioned moratorium, or wherever you talk about density, all of our constituents' hair raises on the back of their necks. You got two extremes and we're trying so hard to meet somewhere in the middle and have balance. And, and that's all, that's all we're trying to do.
Well, it is a balancing act and we certainly understand that.
Yes, sir.
You face these challenges, we face these challenges as well. We want to bring, uh, top quality product, uh, to the new residents, to the existing residents and to the neighborhoods. That's what you want to see as well. And in terms of stakeholders, everybody in this room is a stakeholder and there are thousands more who are not here this evening, uh, who have even much more of a vested interest in how this unfolds, uh, than your construction and building community. So again, we look forward to working through you with this. Uh, we'll help move it along as fast as possible.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Couple more comments from the.
Yes, sir, my name is Matt Campbell. Appreciate you allowing me to be here. Uh, I represent the Georgia Association of Realtors, which is the umbrella organization for the Savannah area realtors, covering Effingham, Bryan, and Chatham, along with the Realtors Commercial Alliance, which are your commercial brokers and such. Just, I'll be brief, um, also referencing the moratorium. I heard a couple of key words, stakeholders and inclusion and working together and move forward. And that's all we ask, ask as you move forward this process to manage this excessive growth that you're experiencing here and Effingham along, in the region, you know? Give them a seat at the table, um, so that all people can be heard. Uh, you know, these realtors are in every community. You probably all know at least five. And, uh, they have their ear to the ground and, uh, many of them are on your school boards and in your churches and they're solid people with solid vision and their, their goal is to have a good community to live into and I believe they can be an asset. And I'll tell you, I just wanna thank you for the great work you do for Effingham County. I live in Bryan County, but my son and his new wife, well, I guess they've been married about a year. They live right here in Springfield and they love it. And so, uh, keep up the good work, thank you.
Thank you.
But every rezoning meeting is just us. No stakeholders on our side.
That's right.
Yeah, so, you know, once again, remind everybody this is a pause because when you, we got probably 18 tonight, public hearings for rezoning requests. And when our staff is hammered by a rapid growing community of zoning requests and yet they're trying to do, as, uh, Commissioner Burdette said, you know, we, we made some improvements. A couple of years ago, we had a little brief moratorium. We closed a lot of things, made a lot of things better with green space and, uh, things like that. So now we see some areas we didn't address because of the development and it's a chance for us to give our staff a minute and say, all right, I don't have to sit down and process 36 rezonings this month. I can focus on getting it right. So it's just a pause, once again, we've got over 3,600 units in the works. So if you're here wanting to see construction stop as a constituent, it ain't gonna stop, there's gonna be development going up. But we wanna, um, improve some things that will not lose our rural community while we still prepare for development, provide an inventory of housing because that's how you drive costs down, affordable housing. My Realtor friends that you just mentioned, they tell me the reason costs are so high is there's no inventory out there. So we realize we do need to have construction to get inventory so the cost can eventually go down. If there's only 10 houses to be bought and 20 of you want it, we start bidding wars and that's not how you have affordable housing. So we, we're looking at all this and I think the pause is gonna be really good. If we can come back early, we will.
Mr. Chairman, just wanna clarify one more thing and you may have said it earlier. So as of today, any application that is in, it's still going through due process, correct?
Yeah, if you made an application prior to the date, then staff will be processing that. You have the right to have to be heard by us under the current zoning requirements. So we'll be looking, but if you don't have one in after this vote tonight, it, it'd be under the moratorium, you should put that in. Whenever we get the text corrected or improved or February, what was it, 20th?
20th.
Is the outs, the outset date. We should have everything done at the latest by then, okay? Got time for another, one more comment if we wanna make one, if not, we'll.
Well, someone, I do wanna speak to it.
Sure.
I think, um, from my perspective, this is in no way to stop growth because that's just not gonna happen. Um, you know, my thoughts on it are the, um, today's, today's market, today's, you know, what, what people are wanting, the ordinance of, um, 15, 20 years ago is just not gonna work. There's just a lot of changes gotta be made. And, uh, this is the only way, really, our staff and, and us as a board can handle it.
Can get it right.
It can get it right.
As right as we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's my two cents on, on where we're heading.
So we hope the builders will appreciate that it's a pause and we hope the constituents appreciate that we're using enough wisdom to at least pause and try to get it right so we don't lose our rural community. Uh, we had some, some good discussions on looking at some of our zoning at this workshop we just had and ways we can, you know, keep that feel of our Effingham County that we appreciate and have enjoyed for myself 45 years, some of you for longer. I've been here a long time.
Maybe nudge some of those builders, hey, it's time to break ground. A lot of stuff approved on the books.
They can break ground instead of rezoning for a while. All right, one last comment.
I know you wanna listen to me, I know you don't.
Absolutely, always.
My name is Jimmy Blakey. These crowd, these people are crowding my state, oh, really bad. You know, y'all fixing the, next month, y'all are gonna approve 124 acres over on Goshen Road and you're gonna approve another cracker box subdivision. They building those, there'll be three cracker box house, houses subdivision within a half a mile there on Goshen Road. When they get them many houses in there and y'all just going three-lane Goshen Road, you need a six-lane that. I mean.
Well, Mr. Jimmy, I don't want you to get ahead of yourself. How do you know we're gonna approve it? We hadn't had any discussion as a board on this.
Well, y'all gonna approve it, I know it, Florida is for sure.
Well. You, you don't know that for sure and, and, and.
If you ain't got, if you don't like it, buy it. Any word you say?
Well.
Time, yes, sir.
Mr. Jimmy, come, come back when those come up and we'll address that. This, tonight is a public hearing on the moratorium. And I, I hope our constituents are, appreciate the moratorium we're putting on, on this for the six months. All right, with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing. It's, it's, we've had a 20-minute discussion. So is there any other discussion from the board?
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve the six-month moratorium.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Kiefer, to approve the six-month moratorium as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. All right. This does not have to have a second reading, I'll sit on here. Okay, very good. All right, very good.
Mr. Chairman, I think our building department was a little disappointed when you said the construction won't slow down. They needed a break too.
Yeah, I think the inspector's better. Stay on, stay on your toes, I don't, I don't see that slowing down. And that doesn't need to, we, we need the affordable housing for our teachers and other folks as well. All right, uh, planning board items, the item one and two has been table postponed, if you're here for that one tonight. Uh, this, uh, the 25.77 acres on Ebenezer Road, if you're here for that tonight, it won't be heard. The applicant requested a postponement to September 17th, 2024. And as a matter of, uh, legality, we have to honor a, a request. They can make one or two requests, remind me, one request. So we will hear this on September 17th. Um, if you're here for that, um, I apologize, but we will not hear that tonight. Item number three under the planning board. Planning board recommends approving the application by Max Lowry for a conditional use for a rural business located at 400 Earl Lane Road for batting, catching lessons, zone AR1, map number 435, parcel number 20 in the second district.
Yes, sir, so the applicant requests a conditional use again for those batting and catching lessons. Um, the permit for this building, um, for that accessory structure was completed in November of 2023. Um, this building is a total of 1,800 square feet. Um, and at the planning board, they did include in their motion to include that extra square footage because the residential, um, business, or the rural business, excuse me, um, ordinance it does specifically say, um, 1,000 square feet. So staff has reviewed the application and it meets the criteria of the current ordinance along with that, uh, extra condition.
All right, we'll open a public hearing and see if anyone tonight wants to speak in favor of the conditional use of a rural business for this property. Anyone speaking against? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing and see if there's any discussion or motion from the board.
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Kiefer, to approve alternative one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. If there are no additional conditions, we can do second reading. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Max Lowry for a conditional use for a rural business located at 400 Earl Lane Road for batting and catching lessons, zone AR1, map number 435, parcel number 20, second district. You have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Deloach, to approve the second reading, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. Item number five, under the, uh, public hearings, the planning board recommends approving an application by Barry Nies for a conditional use for a rural business located at 487 Otis Secundar Road for a lawn mower repair shop, zone AR2, map number 415, parcel number 24 in the second district.
Yes, sir, so that, again, the applicant is requesting that conditional use for a rural business. Um, in the rural business ordinance, it does specifically state that small repair shops for appliances, machinery, farm equipment, and automobiles are allowed. Um, I have that within your staff report as well. Um, the applicant is proposing to install a fence that would create screening on two sides of the business and this is consistent with the future land use map as this parcel is projected to be agricultural residential. Uh, staff has reviewed the application and it meets the criteria of the current ordinance.
All right, we'll open a public hearing, see if there's anyone tonight speaking in favor or against the conditional use for a rural business of this property. Anyone speaking in favor or against? All right, seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing and entertain discussion or motion from the board.
Yeah, we'll say we've had at least, I believe, one close in the area in, in District Two. So definitely could use, use another one. So, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, alternative one.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Kiefer, to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. We can do the second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Barry Nies for a conditional use for a rural business located at 487 Otis Secundar Road for a lawn mower repair shop, zone AR2, map number 415, parcel number 24 in the second district. No motion?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Deloach, to approve the second reading, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. Item number seven, planning board recommends approving an application by Eden Brown for a conditional use to allow for agritourism business located at 450 Josiah Morgan Road, uh, zone AR1, map number 361, parcel number 1G in the third district.
Yes, sir, so the applicant is requesting that conditional use for agritourism. Um, the applicant is currently a beekeeper and is expanding that business to include an extraction room for extracting the honey, a honey house for selling beekeeping supplies, honey and gifts. Um, a site plan and business narrative have been provided per the Effingham County Code of Ordinance, section 5.1.2.13, uh, which is the agritourism business. Um, Josiah Morgan Road is a county maintained dirt road and per the ordinance, the applicant will provide parking on the property as no parking will be along the side of any public roads. Uh, staff has reviewed the application and it meets the criteria of the current ordinance.
Okay, we'll open a public hearing to hear from anyone speaking in favor or against this conditional use as an agritourism business. State your name and then if you're speaking for or against.
Hi, I'm Eden Brown with Savannah River Honey. I'm also a local Realtor, so, um, I'm one of those Realtors here.
Okay.
Gonna have, you know, to wait, which is fun. Um, so I'm here to answer any questions you may have about our agritourism business for Savannah River Honey.
I was at the, uh, planning board and I heard your, um, I heard your presentation and I, I don't live very far from there, I live on Sisters Ferry Road.
Yeah.
How many hives is, that you have? It was a lot, right?
Um, we just split, so how many more are we up to?
Okay.
How many?
How many?
How many?
100.
About 300 hives.
300.
300.
Yeah.
How much land is this on?
We have 38 acres, but we also have other fields that our hives are on as well.
Flowers will grow really well around that area.
That's right, yeah.
Now, do you, do you put any of your hives on rail?
On what?
On rail? Train?
Colby, no.
Okay, no. Okay.
Right.
I mean, not at all, I was just curious.
Okay.
I knew, I knew some people out, out west that, um, around here ship them out west because with the fruit crops, it's a big deal, it's a big shortage of honeybees.
Yeah.
That's really, really important.
No, we, at this point, we're not doing that. Um, we're just partnering with local farmers, so.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you so much.
Would y'all like a sample?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
I'll be a customer.
Hope we can get it after we vote. All right, anyone speaking, uh, in opposition to this request? Lee, is this considered a bribe? Make sure the attorney gets one, we want him in on this. Sure, bring it on. Anyone speaking against? Since I don't see anyone speaking against, we'll, uh, close the public hearing. Thank you so much.
I've seen this honey, uh, you sell it at the nursery there in Fort Worth.
It's still worn.
It just came out on our car.
I was hoping you were gonna say right out of the hive.
All right, dude.
We just, we wrapped it this back on Father's Day.
Really? Beautiful.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Why, she's gonna be.
I'll be a customer.
Yeah, I'll be a customer too. All right, is there a motion to approve?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve with staff and planning board recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette, to approve with staff and planning board recommendations, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. So we'll have the second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Eden Brown for a conditional use to allow for agritourism business use to allow for agritourism business located at four fifty Josiah Morgan Road, zone AR one, map number three sixty-one, parcel number one G in the third district. Motion for the second reading?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloach, second, Mr. Burdette to approve the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. Item number nine, the planning board recommends approving an application by David Westbury for a conditional use to allow for an agritourism business located at five eighty-four Laurel Hill Road, zone AR one, map number four oh four, parcel number seventeen in third district.
Yes, sir. So like the previous item, this applicant is requesting that conditional use for agritourism. A site plan and business narrative have been provided, again, per the Effingham County ordinance for agritourism business. Laurel Hill Road is a county maintained road, and again, the applicant will be providing onsite parking as no parking will be allowed on the county road. Mr. Westbury is proposing to have a U-Pick blueberry business with a future market stand. His current operation will use two to two and a half acres for the blueberries with expansion possibilities of three to four acres. Staff has reviewed the application and it meets the criteria of the current ordinance.
Thank you very much. We'll open a public hearing and see if there's anyone speaking in favor or against this agritourism business located at this property. Do you bring a sample?
Sorry there, they've all been sold. After season. Thanks for having me here. And I just, uh, I'm David Westbury, and I am here presenting to you the Dave's Blueberry Patch at five eighty-four Laurel Hill Road in Clyde. Dave's Blueberry Patch wants to provide to the community a family-friendly U-Pick farm experience where individuals, families, and their children can come experience picking fresh blueberries, possibly strawberries, blackberries, and other seasonal fruits and vegetables, farm-fresh eggs, and local honey. We got our honey from, uh, your, the lady right before me. We end to have, we're going to have parking, and we're going to have a pavilion-type building area for people to come in, check in, pay for their berries. We'll, we'll probably serve fresh homemade ice cream, which is very popular at other blueberries farms that I've been to. We'll have rocking chairs and things around for people to come and socialize and enjoy the atmosphere, and, um, the bulk of our operation will be seasonal, March, seasonable, March through, mid-July. We plan to be open like Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, nine to five, Saturday and Sunday, one to five, Sunday. That may can, you know, expand as the business grows popularity, so, um, we would like to open March of two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor or against this agritourism business? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. Got a question. An agritourism business, is it permissible to sell products that you do not produce or raise on that property? I thought I heard him say he was going to maybe sell honey, which I'm not against it, but it seems like we may be have a, an issue here if you're selling something that's not produced on that property.
I have honeybees. I got them from.
He has them on bees, yes.
No, I don't, I don't think. I mean, if you're cooper, cooperative with your neighboring businesses, I don't, you know what I'm saying?
Well, the reason I want, I just bring that to begin, I mean, it sounds like a great, I love the idea, and I can't wait to pick some strawberries and blueberries over there, but could someone abuse that where they go out and it becomes like a grocery store? Because they bring in produce.
As long as he doesn't sell moonshine, we're probably all right.
Sounds like you got the board's favor on that. I just, I just saw a potential for misuse if you go out and you bring in all these other products.
That's the worst abuse we have to worry about.
Yeah, I think it's just neighbors working together. I mean, she may say, help me sell some blueberries.
I wish I did.
I don't have moonshine, so unfortunately, that, there's that, once again, Eden Brown with Savannah River Honey. So if he were to sell our honey on his property, it would just be considered wholesale, just like if he went to Sweet Treats Cannery and asked to, to buy a bulk from them, it would just be considered wholesale.
That, that, that's my point. If the board has no problem, and attorney has no problem, I have no problem. I just, my job is to raise questions.
Right.
And, you know, when you, when it's something you don't produce, it could be.
And that's where the state license comes in. So we just got state approved today as well. They came in and inspected our facility to make sure we were up to code with everything. So, um, he would just have to make sure his wholesale license, if that's what he wants to do, and to, to have that available for other people if he's going to have other people, whatever they have, whether it's jellies, jams, honey, to have that wholesale license.
Okay. Lee, you don't, you have any issue from the legal side, do you, based on ordinance?
No, I mean, I think that's part of the agritourism business.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's local business, supporting local business.
Okay. That's, that was my main question, if you could just sell wholesale.
And if he decides not to do wholesale, it's perfectly fine, even if with his blueberries, he's selling to the consumer, so.
I have no problem with things you raise, I just wasn't sure. Yeah, about that, that's fine.
All right.
The attorney's answered all my questions.
Thank you.
All right, there's no other discussion, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff and planning board recommendations.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloach, second, Mr. Floyd to approve with staff and planning board recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. Item number ten, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by David Westbury for a conditional use to allow for agritourism business located at five eighty-four Laurel Hill Road, zone AR one, map number four oh four, parcel number seventeen in the third district.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloach, second, Mr. Floyd to approve the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. Item number eleven, the planning board recommends denying an application by Walter Ochoa, I don't know if I pronounced that right, I apologize if I didn't, for a variance located at three sixty-two East Deerfield Road from sections seventy-four point eight to allow for commercial truck parking at the driver's residence, zone AR one, map number three seven seven A, parcel number twenty-five E in the first district.
Uh, yes, sir. So the applicant, again, is requesting a variance from that section seventy-four point eight, and again, that section is on your staff report. This is a code enforcement case, and the applicant is working to come into compliance. The applicant explained that they do have four dump trucks that are currently parked on the property that they wish to use for business operation. Planning board did recommend denial. Staff has reviewed the application, and it meets the criteria of the ordinance for this And again, this is a code enforcement case.
But it meets the criteria, you, you step in.
For, it does, for that specific, for the specific variance, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So we'll open a public hearing and see if there's anyone that'd like to speak in favor of this variance request for this piece of property.
Any candidates?
In a minute. Is, is the applicant out here to speak in favor of it? Since it's, the planning board's recommending denying, I thought they might want to speak.
I don't see them.
Okay, anyone speaking in opposition to this variance request? Now, if you're speaking in opposition to this variance request, you can come forward.
They won't need to be far from us.
If you would state your name in the microphone for the record, that'd be great.
Yes, sir. My name is Richard Dice. I live in Lakeside Farms. I'm also the president of the community association. We're against this from the very beginning for lots of reasons. Number one, we want to keep our neighborhood a neighborhood. I mean, I've been out there thirty-five years. I don't want to see dump trucks in the morning. My children have grown, but I do have grandchildren, and now with school in, we got school buses out. We don't need a lot of dump trucks running up down the roads with our children out there, the buses running. He's got the land totally cleared and has put an enormous amount of dirt on it. With further investigation, the back end of the lot, the dirt's eroding. It's getting into our swamp, which feeds our lake. Okay, if you've got a bunch of dump trucks out there, and they're going to leak, they're going to have diesel fuel, transmission fluid, whatever. If that starts to get down toward the swamp, that's going to kill the swamp, that's going to kill our lake. I mean, there's, you know, a lot of variables here other than just parking the, the dump trucks on the property. And again, we'd like to keep our neighborhood, our nice quiet neighborhood. We don't need a lot of these commercial vehicles coming through the neighborhood. And again, protect the children and the school buses. I mean, we're just totally against it, and I appreciate y'all doing that.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else speaking in opposition tonight? Anyone else? If there's anyone else that wants to speak in opposition, if you want to go ahead and move behind him, that way we can keep it moving.
Okay. James Payne, two thirty Deerfield, I'm about five houses up on the location where he wants to put all the trucks. And at late in the afternoon, when I say late in the afternoon, five, six o'clock, school buses come by at about, well, you got different routes to school bus, but the level of route comes by is about four twenty. So the kids are walking up the side of the road, go to visit their, their friends or whatever. Here comes a dump truck. Now, dump truck I see coming by each day, I'll say thirty percent of them might be doing close to the speed limit, rest of them then are hurried to go home and get supper or go do something else. Sir, our roads, we got narrow roads, they're only, they're, they're paved, but they were, the standards they were paved to was, I don't know, fifty years ago. And to have a dump truck going down the road, they're tearing it up. We have other, other trucks coming through the neighborhood. Our, our neighborhood is lucky. You have three ways of getting in, three ways of getting out. Some neighborhoods only have one, but we have other people coming through stage codes, coming through the housing area, and taking a shortcut, get on seventeen or highway eighty. Sir, I, I like seeing my little kids out, my grandkids out there trying to ride a bicycle, go see their buddies three houses down, and here comes a dump truck, forty-five, fifty miles an hour, whoof! Sir, we only had one of our neighbors ran over by a DUI a couple of years back.
Yeah.
Sir, we don't, we don't, we don't want to set ourselves up for failure, and that's what we're doing. And he said, uh, three trucks, four trucks? Well, he's got a track hoe out there, he's got four or five trucks out there. It's, it ain't residential, he's wanting to make it commercial, and we're against it.
He said he has a hoe out there?
A track hoe. Heavy equipment.
Backhoe, yeah, okay. Interesting.
Uh, and, and, oh, and I'm against it, sir.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else after this lady speaks that's going to speak to this tonight?
I don't think so.
Anyone else? All right, we'll hear, we'll hear your comments and then we'll close the public hearing.
My name is Sandra Cook. I'm secretary of the Lakeside Farms Community Association. Excuse me. We probably have one of the oldest subdivisions in this county. We have been recorded since nineteen sixty-nine. We are zoned as residential and agricultural. There is nothing commercial. We have covenants that are duly recorded that we live by, and we have done everything we can to keep our community safe. But these dump trucks, we have, like Jean said, we have three entrances into our community association. One is Ziegler Road. Ziegler Road ends on Robling, Robling Road, and the other is Deerfield Road that goes into Otchon Road that runs into Stagecoach. This man's property at three sixty-four or three sixty-two is probably less than a quarter of a mile from Otchon Road. And if he's allowed to put a business there, he's going to be utilizing coming into Lakeside, which is absolutely nothing commercial about us at all. We learned today that he has third, he has purchased a third piece of property in Lakeside, so he now owns three pieces of property. We have, um, a lake, we have a community park, we have a hundred and seventy lot owners that live in Lakeside, and we've done everything we can to keep them safe and protected. And if this is allowed to happen, and the county has been great in helping us post signs for trucks not entering, load limit signs, and they're totally ignored. So, I mean, with, the county has done what we have asked them to do, it's just that nothing is being accomplished, we're spinning off wheels. So, you know, for the safety of our people and for the community, we ask that this be denied.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and see if there's a discussion among the board.
I have sat in on several of the Lakeside community meetings, and I have to say that's probably the oldest functioning HOA in the county, and they do fight to protect their neighborhood. This is similar to what we denied on Highlands Drive and over in Thompson subdivision. I'm in agreement with the, uh, folks over there, and I'll make, unless there's other discussion, I make a motion that we deny.
I'm, I'm not familiar with the neighborhood, but looking, it clearly.
Middle of the neighborhood, but it's not suitable.
Doesn't sound like an appropriate variance, so I entertain a motion.
I would like to say, uh, we're not like anti-trucker, because we, we have, this boards worked hard to, to have a, uh, ordinance that will allow them to take their truck home, truck only, uh, so they can get home and not have to worry about a place to park. But that was the only intent of that. But then you're talking, I mean, weight-wise, sixteen thousand pounds, eighteen thousand pounds, a dump truck can carry sixty thousand pounds, which is a whole different application. And we're talking about trying to put not only commercial into a residential area, but industrial into a residential area. So I just put that in a little perspective.
If this was out in the country, he had ten acres, that's one thing, but I mean, this is literally in the middle of a neighborhood that's planted as a neighborhood.
Well, do you have a motion?
A motion to deny.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Floyd, second, Mr. Kiefer to deny this, uh, motion for variance. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it is denied unanimously. Okay, so we don't need the second reading.
Every once in a while, Mr. Blakey, I pull one off.
All right, item number thirteen, the planning board recommends denying an application by Eric Hannah, Eric and Hannah Wright for a variance located at one twenty-five Clyde Road from section seventy-four point eight to allow for commercial truck parking at the driver's residence, zone AR one, map number three ninety-eight, parcel number one in the fourth district.
Yes, sir. So like the previous, um, item, the applicant is requesting that variance from section seventy-four point eight. This is also a code enforcement case, and the applicant is working to come into conformance. The variance will allow the applicant to park, um, his bobtail truck and two trailers at his home. Staff has reviewed the application and it meets the criteria, um, of the ordinance in the fact that they are asking for that variance.
So the, the variance is met if you park in the trailer there?
Um, so they are asking, um, because the ordinance is, says that they cannot, um, they can only take their bobtail home.
Right.
And they are asking to, uh, do something different, that is how, um, they are meeting the criteria because they're asking for something separate.
Okay, they, they, they didn't meet our zoning.
It's not, it's not meeting the criteria of the ordinance in that.
But they have the right to.
But they're asking for the variance.
They have the right to request a variance, is that all you're trying to say?
Yes, sir.
I got you, okay. If you can say that, it didn't sound like that was in compliance right off the bat.
Yes, sir.
And I'm just going to come in, I think people need to comply with our ordinance this first.
First, and then.
Then ask a variance.
Because I know we've had other people that had to make other arrangements.
Yeah, that we denied. So just for, for those who are here tonight, you don't want to break the ordinance law and then ask for variance, you want to comply and be upfront. You'll get a lot further if you do that, where your neighbors in with this board. But anyway, that's neither here nor there. I'm opening a public hearing first, and we'll have our discussions, and I just want to make that blanket statement, uh, see if there's anyone tonight speaking in favor or first in favor of this variance, requesting to be able to park their truck and their two trailers. Anyone tonight speaking in favor? Anyone tonight speaking in opposition to this request?
Yes, sir. My name is Reginald Ron. I live on, I live on Courthouse Road, a little ways down the road from where this is, but I own land across the road from this property and across the Courthouse Road, Courthouse Road and Clyde Road. There's been a flatbed parked there and a box trailer, uh, forty-foot, not container, but van, for two months now that haven't moved. So it's not for overnight parking, it's for months of storage, and he is bringing trucks in there loaded and leaving them over the weekend. So he's not applying any ordinance to what's going on. And it's just, it's, it's an AR one. You talk about making this a rural county, that is rural, and we don't want to go commercial out there in the middle.
Appreciate it, Mr. Ron, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else tonight speaking in opposition to this, um, variance request? Is the applicant here tonight that's asking for that variance? Did you want to speak?
Yeah, um.
Can you state your name for the record?
I'm Eric Wright.
Okay.
Yeah, um, when I first bought the property, you know, I was just told that it wasn't no HOA, and, you know, I'm not really sure about the ordinance at the time. I mean, the thing about it is, is that, I mean, they got, they got a dirt pit right down the road, a farm right across from me that's being operated. I mean, when we say it's a residence, we got guns being shot across the street, my kids in the yard, you know, things like that that happens, but we. You know, things like that that happens, but we call it a residence. I mean, how can it be a residence when we are shooting hunting guns through the day and stuff like that? I mean, not to put one over the other, but, I mean, I work hard, it's kind of difficult sometimes, you know, driving home, dealing with things. I pay parking down the, the reason I bought this property, set it up the way I did, was for my trailer to be parked in the back of my yard, out of the way. You know, and, um, the reason I did that was because I was paying my trailers at the truck stop practically five hundred dollars a month. And this is my first time buying a home, I say, well, this would be convenient for me to be able to park it here out of the way. There are empty trailers, they're not loaded, there's no weight on them. They're just there so, you know, when I need them, I could, you know, I can access them without having to pay truck, you know, truck parking, where I normally was paying it, and it just saves me a couple bucks. And, you know, it's out of the way of everybody, I made a second driveway specifically for those trailers. Yes, sometimes I do come home with a trailer at nights, that's something I can stop doing. But I would, at least, you know, I was just with the empty trailers, it was just convenient for me to save, to save some money from paying parking down the road every month. So pretty much me being able to, that can go towards my mortgage, and then it, it's just, it's convenient for me to be out of the way.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Appreciate y'all hearing me.
Mr. Wright, do you have some questions for me?
Do you own your own authority? Do you have your own business, or do you work for another company?
No, I have my own authority.
Authority, see, but, I mean, when you get into that, you, you have a trucking company. Whether you're one truck, three trucks, or five trucks, you know, it's different. If you were working for another company, you could work for that company and park on their yard, you know, but when you go off on your own, you operate a business like everybody else does, and it really doesn't belong in a residence. But what I would say, knowing a little bit about the business, maybe some of your bigger customers, talk with them, see if they wouldn't mind you parking something there. And we do some of that ourselves.
Yeah, but you know, like I said, it was just convenient, most of the customers I deal with is innocent.
We understand what you're trying to do.
I'm just saying that, you know-
That, that's why we enacted where you could bring the, the cab home, the truck park, the bobtail, as you call it.
Right, 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 like I said-
Because they're trying to make it where a gentleman can have a, a, have a business but not a trailer, you know? It's convenient, you know, you can, you can pull other people's containers, you can pull yours. But, but we don't want containers, and that's a pretty small lot right there.
And it's, I mean, it's, I mean, everybody down that road mostly park their trucks. I mean, there's a guy down the road and right there in trailer, about come home with his trailer every night, multiple, all across that road, like-
They're parking their truck.
Truck and trailer. They, most of these guys around here are in containers. I mean, he have a thousand people to go to when it comes down to, you know, parking containers in the yard. The reason I bought that property because I know a couple guys that been doing it for years, you know?
Getting away with it.
Tell us who they are and we'll send, uh, our, our non-compliance officer out there.
I'm sure he will, all right, thank you.
If you want to contact me later, I'd be glad to try to help you find-
He, he's in logistics and he might get help you with someplace where you can park your trailer. We, we don't want to hurt you as a businessman, but-
I know how to start now, man, it's tough.
The trailers are no, no, in, on a si- lot this size particularly.
Yes, you're good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussions?
I think we've spent a lot of time on our trucking ordinance. I mean, if we grant this variance, I mean, we've basically erased everything we've done. I think we've been fair with allowing them to bobtail home. Um, with that, I'll make a motion to deny the request.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloach, second by, uh, Mr. Burnett, to deny the request, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing no knows, uh, the request for the variance is denied. Sorry for that, but your truck, cab can come, but the trailers need to be removed immediately. Uh, no second reading necessary, item number fifteen. The planning board recommends approving the application by Steve Murray for a variance from five point one point four, located at three twenty-one Horseshoe Road to allow for a reduction in the required building setbacks, zone AR one, map number three fifty-five A, parcel number thirteen E in the first district.
Yes, sir, so again, the applicant is requesting the variance to allow the reduction in required building setbacks. Um, this is to place a second home on the property that cannot meet setbacks due to the location of a septic tank. Um, there was a single wide mobile home on this property, um, in the same spot previously. Uh, the home will only be eight feet from the back property line. Um, this property is zoned AR one, so the rear property setback is supposed to be fifty feet. Um, so this variance will be for forty-two feet. Um, staff has reviewed the application, um, and again, because it is a variance, um, it doesn't meet the criteria of the ordinance, but he is asking for that variance.
Well, there's another requirement on variance, and it's a hardship. Is staff identifying a hardship?
Um, so the location of the septic tank, um, is what is keeping him from being able to meet the setbacks on the property.
I can ask my question now or wait till after discussion, but you said there was already a, there once was a, another single wide there?
Yes, sir.
Just replacing what was there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone tonight speaking, uh, in favor of this variance request on this property? We're in a public hearing. All right, anyone tonight speaking in objection to this variance request? Okay, seeing no one speaking in objection?
Did anybody show up to speak against it?
For it, but not against it.
Okay, nobody was against it, not on Horseshoe?
I'm going to close the public hearing then and see if there's a discussion or motion from the board.
Uh, if it's replacing what was, uh, there, I don't have a problem. I say staff and planning board made the motion for approval, so I'll say I'll approve it, or offer approval with, uh, staff and planning board recommendations for the variance.
Motion, Mr. Floyd, second by, uh, Mr. Deloach. And I will note that staff has identified a hardship for us, because that's what should be based on there. It would interfere with the septic system to not give the variance. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing no knows it passes unanimously. And I remember s- the second reading, considerations to approve a second reading on the application by Steve Murray for a variance from section five point one point four, located at three twenty-one Horseshoe Road to allow for a reduction in required building setbacks, zone AR one, map number three fifty-five A, parcel number thirteen E in the first district.
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Floyd, second, Mr. Deloach, approve second reading, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing no knows it passes unanimously. Item number eighteen, is that right?
Seventeen, right.
Yeah, seventeen, I'm sorry, flipped the page, messed me up. All right, item number seventeen, the planning board recommends approving an application by Tad Segers for, or Seegers, for a variance, uh, from section three point two oh, located at nine fifty-three Robling Road, to allow for a reduction in the required minimum square footage for a single living unit, zone AR one, map number three seventy-seven, parcel number two, in the first district.
Yes, sir, so again, the applicant is requesting the variance to allow the reduction in the required minimum square footage for a single family living unit. Um, the ordinance does require, um, five hundred and twenty-five square feet. Um, the home will be a total of two hundred and eight square feet. Um, the parcel is zoned AR two and does not have a dwelling on the property currently. Um, staff has reviewed the application, and right now it does not meet the criteria of the current ordinance, um, which is why the variance is being asked.
Can you not get a proper-sized house on that?
Um, you can, um, the applicant is requesting for a tiny home.
Okay.
And I do have pictures-
Discussion, and I'll throw my two cents on this one.
Okay.
Here, here is the home, um, the applicant did send pictures that he would like to place on the property.
Keep that up there, we'll have the public hearing, then I'll see if the board has some questions or comments.
Absolutely.
Uh, anyone tonight speaking in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, my name is Tad Segers, and I'm the applicant. Shall I share a couple of reasons, or should I answer a question for you? I didn't know what your question was.
Share what you're requesting, because this is a var-
Well, yes, sir, um, I, I would love to sell this home, I've had it built for three years and hadn't been able to use it or enjoy it. Um, and I've actually got seventy thousand dollars in it, that's my fault, my problem. However, it is a beautiful home, and I would like to use it and enjoy it. Um, I do understand there's been, um, another approval of a tiny home, um, I think in the county, but neither here nor there. I've, I've hired people to improve the property already. Uh, it, it's about five acres that I have there, and this tiny home, I, I race at Robling quite often. I'd like to use and enjoy it and maybe share it. And it's going to be in the back left corner, and I don't even think you'll see it from the road.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is this considered a RV or a true tiny home? I mean, we, we went through an entire tiny home discussion a few years ago with Mr. Maddox, and, uh, we set those standards based on, I guess, tiny home building standards. Is this something you built, or you was purchased from a factory?
Well, well, when I got tricked into buying it for a price I couldn't refuse, I, um, I, I don't know the, how to answer your question, I, I don't, it, it's not an RV, it is on wheels. Um, I, I have a lot of money invested in it, and it's, I, I would like to share it, use it, and enjoy it. And I don't, I don't know how it would be, um, any problem, so to speak. I, I, I don't have the money to spend two hundred thousand on a, a regular home, and I have an asset here. And it would also give me more incentive to even make the property even more enhanced and beautiful than it already is. It, it looks a lot better now, in the last several months, I've hired people for the lake and the-
Will it be your primary residence?
No, sir, it will not.
Is this, is this, uh, home already on the property?
No, sir, it's in Hilton Head, at my race shop.
Well, if you don't have money to buy a home, I mean, racing's a pretty expensive hobby.
Yes, it is.
Money goes as the hobby.
That's right. Now, I'm focused on some other things right now, but I've, I've owned the land, I think, three or four years maybe. And, um, I did make application for something else previously, and it was turned down. Um, I was wanting to do some glamping, uh, treehouses in a small RV boutique resort.
Do we have a place in Evingham for a tiny home already?
Do they exist, or?
Do we have a place that, that zoning would be permitted? Because this is not zoned yet, so he's asking for a variance. Do we have a place where something is zoned already that could be a tiny home where it's a permitted use?
Not, not by right, we, when we've approved them, we've approved them with variances, so, um, and I, and I think at the, uh, that Highway thirty location, and there was another location that was within the last year or so, um, uh, where, uh, a woman, uh, put it, I think it was in a more rural location, but we have approved them, it's just by variance.
AR one is like five acres or more, right?
Yes, sir.
But the issue, I think, is the square footage, right?
Yeah, issue, issue square footage, I just, you definitely wouldn't want a tiny home on a R one.
I just don't know if this is a tiny home or not, I don't know.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, how is it in, in fact, you know, the ones we've approved were factory-built with approved plumbing, electric. How is our building inspectors going to, without seeing in the walls, know what the heck he's got? And then on top of that, I mean-
Sure.
Is there septic there, sewage, what's-
Yeah, I, I understand and respect everything you're asking. Um, I think I'm still waiting on an email and/or a list of items of what I'm gonna need to do before I do bring it, if, if I do get approval for the variance. Guys, I, I'd like to put it in the back left corner, I, I mean, to, to view the racetrack, that's why I bought the property, is overlooking Robling Road. Um, and I, I don't see where it would be anything other than, um, I, I don't see any harm or any reason not to approve it, and I do ask you to approve it. And it will have to be inspected, it will have to pass, pass, um, all the sewer water, uh, wind code, everything, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, we did hold a technical review committee meeting, uh, with Mr. Segers. Um, we did speak, uh, the Department of Public Health was there, um, to speak about, um, the septic issue. Um, and one of the, uh, conditions I do have is that the dwelling shall, in all other ways, conform to applicable building codes and county ordinances, including, um, should the variance be approved tonight, uh, they would have to supply, um, Georgia-designed professional stamp plans, um, to our building inspectors for approval for the, for the home.
And, Mr. Chairman, um, when I was going to do the other, um, glamping treehouse, I actually had an arch, hired an architect to enlarge an addition that would be built. But then again, in today's cost, it would be probably another fifty or seventy-five thousand dollars that it would cost me. But if you look back at the property, I, I don't know who's going to know it's two hundred square feet versus five hundred square feet, really.
The next person that comes and wants to do the same thing.
I, I understand, that's why one person's been approved, and I'd like to be the second person, if I meet all the safety and health.
Theirs was in the square footage, though. It was in the square footage, though, it met the square footage requirements. This belongs in an RV park, in my opinion.
It's a little big tech trailer.
What was the, what was the tiny house that was approved? I don't remember one for two hundred square foot.
It wasn't, it's four hundred, four fifty.
Okay.
The lady paid for it cash, she had her own property, and she lived with her cat.
Okay, I did think I remember a two hundred square foot. All right, thank you, sir.
Well, that was, her land is in RV park, or?
Hers met, hers was, uh, a custom, it was built and had all the standards, and it met our square footage requirements. And it was out in the country, nobody could see it.
Okay, may I ask, um, while I'm present, um, what would be a harm in, in having this on the property, if it doesn't meet the square feet?
If it doesn't conform.
I, I understand, but if we're going to change some-
You set a precedent of non-conforming like this without a hardship, I mean, a hardship that we cause, not hardship that you cause with yourself. I don't mean to throw something at you there, but the cause cannot be the hardship. You know, if it's something, non-conforming lot size or something we cause, it'd be a different story. Anyway, um, we, we gotta, we gotta move on, we've asked some questions for you. Did you want to make a comment?
No, I, I just think he's done a lot to improve the property and, um, that it would not be in any way, um, deter from the neighborhood. I think it would, he, he's brought value to the neighborhood by improving the property.
I'm sure, I'm sure he has, like, the issue, and I don't know how the folk, the folks are going to go to the end.
I understand the issue.
But you, you set a precedent, and somebody else that doesn't do what he does wants a two-hundred-foot house, and how do you say no? You've already, you've already broke your ordinance once without a hardship that we've caused or the lot causes. That's the issue, okay. All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else tonight would like to speak in favor or against this, um, request? See anyone coming forward, I'm going to close the public hearing, see if there's any other further discussion, and then entertain a motion.
I just don't know, is it a tiny home or a tiny mobile home? I mean, really, I don't know if a tiny, I think of a tiny house.
As a general, I mean, as a general rule, tiny houses are, are built on, um, on frames with wheels and then moved to site.
But taken off, right?
Uh, they don't necessarily have to be.
Okay, I, I'm asking.
It's kind of a, it's, it's a difficult way to define it, um, but we could define it any we want in our ordinance, uh, when we, when, when we look to address it.
And we're, that's part of what we're looking at, right?
Yeah, but I think it's slightly different in that we are looking at tiny house kind of villages, multiple, um,
Right.
Uh, multiple location, multiple homes on one site.
Like a subdivision, yeah.
For me, knowing a little bit about the track, um, I'd be definitely afraid to put something back in that left corner, even if it's a larger one, without some kind of barrier. This is straight coming down there, and they're a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty miles an hour right there, so it'd be definitely danger of that. But I'm, I'm a little confused, because I know there's a commercial trailer parked there all the time, I thought we were, they were renting it out, is that? There's, so we're in violation of our ordinance right there, um, to start with.
It was a primary residence, and that was a true hardship.
I would love to see-
You can have a mobile home probably on, on five-acre track.
You could, but not, I mean, if you do it in that area.
Excuse me, sir, I, it's very important. I'm not renting that, somebody asked me if they could place it there, I'm not receiving a dollar. And he's the one that's cut my grass and made it look so good, so I'm not breaking an ordinance.
Well, I mean, by allowing that, you are breaking our ordinance.
Oh, by allowing it? Ah.
It's your property, right?
I misunderstood, well, then I'll address that.
But I, I would love to see you do something nice out there, they need something nice, but a tiny home out there in the corner? That'd be hard to get on board with that.
Is there any other, any other information the board needs to discuss before they entertain a motion? All right, is there a motion to approve or deny?
We spent a lot of time on that tiny home ordinance and you just said a minute ago, we need to stick to what we have and I'm in agreement with that.
Without a hardship, I don't see how you.
Isn't really a hardship, it's not a primary residence, in my opinion. I make a motion to deny.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bur, um, sorry, Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Burnett to deny. All in favor of denial, say aye. Any opposed, no. It is denied unanimously. I think the issue is without a, a, a hardship for the lot or something that, it's gotta be some kind of hardship to really justify a variance, we open a can. All right, item number nineteen, the planning board recommends approving the application by Mallory Boyd as agent for Mungo Homes of Georgia LLC for a variance located at Highway one nineteen south from section five point eight point six to allow for a reduction in required lot widths. Zone R six, map number three forty-four, parcel number twenty-six A in the third district.
Yes, sir, so that, um, the R six ordinance within Effingham County Code specifically states that the lot width shall be a minimum of sixty feet. Um, this variance will cover the lots, uh, within the phase that do not meet the sixty-foot lot width. Um, this is phase two. Um, at the planning board meeting on July ninth, twenty twenty-four, uh, Mr. Neil McKenzie did explain, um, that the lot widths that do not meet the sixty-foot lot width are at least fifty-five feet. Um, again, staff has reviewed the application and, um, it does not meet the criteria of the ordinance, uh, which is why they have applied for the variance.
All those red lots are five feet, basically?
Yes, sir.
Get one, one, one lot, you can meet the compliance with the zoning ordinance. Sounds like, I don't know, open a public hearing, anyone tonight speaking in favor of this resi, uh, this variance request?
Hi, Greg Coleman with Coleman Company, uh, I'm gonna try to, try to get this right and Chelsea and Steve, please speak up if I'm saying something that's wrong. Um, Ni- Neil McKenzie is, uh, out, out of the country and Mallory was at Rincon, so I, I, I was coming here already. So, uh, it's my understanding that with this phase, um, this phase is already under construction, uh, uh, with the construction documents. Um, I think that the reason that this, we got in this situation is the, the rules for R six are a little bit different in the residential zoning districts and where the lot width is measured, is my understanding. Um, and so at the setback lines, we've got the sixty feet. But in the R six, the lot width is married, measured at the front lot line, uh, where in the other residential zoning districts, it's measured at the setback line. Um, if, if that makes any sense. Um, so like a cul-de-sac lot, for example, that's a pie shape, you may not have sixty feet at the front, but you get back to the front setback line, you do have the sixty feet cause the lot's getting wider, if that makes sense. So it's, this wasn't, I, I don't, I think this was intentional to do this. Um, like I said, uh, the roads are, are, I think, I think that the phase is almost finished being constructed. Um, and now we're trying to come back with the plat and I think it was, it was caught at this stage. Uh, this wasn't something intentional done, it's just a situation where, that we're in with this phase. Um, it has been addressed in all future phases, uh, in the design phase and not the plating phase. Um, it just happened to come up at this point in the project after construction is already w- well underway and I, I believe close to completion. Um, so I, I think that was.
Houses on each one of those lots?
Uh, not the houses, the subdivision, the, the road construction, the, the, the lot grading, all, all that is being developed. This is for, uh, home developer of Mungo Homes, um, so that they will be, they're trying to get the plat recorded so then they can proceed with the, with the vertical construction.
Some clarification, how does this get past the, uh, when the site plan is given to our staff to review? And it's not sixty foot, how does it get past that point that we had in construction?
That's why you're saying it, because it did get past that.
Give me the microphone, I can't hear you, I'm sorry. I'm thinking before ground is broken, there should have been a review of the site plans, they held this is fifty-five or this is fifty and it should be sixty, if there's any cost.
Sarah Smith, the Eastern Planner Two, um, this was approved, uh, by previous staff. Um, and it was not caught during that step. We have, we verify now with all future projects that we have the sixty-foot or whatever the requirement is by the ordinance. Um, unfortunately, it is just one that slipped through the cracks.
Okay, so. I'm not, not throwing any rocks, but just to make sure I understand, the staff didn't catch that it didn't comply?
From the preliminary plat.
To the preliminary plat.
Correct.
And from the preliminary plat, can the developer go out and begin construction from that?
They can from once the ODA and development plan has been approved.
Okay, and other than that fifty-five, I'm just kidding, question, I'm not saying how the board's gonna go with this. Other than that fifty-five, is there anything smaller than fifty-five across that? Are there any forty-fives? How material is this?
Are those smaller than fifty-five?
At the, the, I don't believe so, that is what Neil said. I don't think he would've said that if that wasn't the case, to tell you that I know that for sure, I'm not gonna tell you, I'm not gonna guarantee you that, okay? But I do know when I was talking to Neil about this, when it, uh, came up at Planning Board and I was here last time, I asked him, I said, do we meet it at the, at the lot setbacks? And he said, yes, we do meet the, the lot width at the setback line, which is, I think, how it got through our office this way. Um, it's because the other residential zoning districts, that is where it's measured, not at the front lot line, especially like in a cul-de-sac lot situation, which is, I would say, pretty typical of other municipalities and just typical design, those cul-de-sac lots are narrow at the front. You get to the front setback, you've got the lot width so that the house that's being built there is meeting the intent of the ordinance and the size of the home.
And all the other setbacks related to the housing's gonna be met?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Why did it only happen in this one area?
That was my question, cause we haven't had this, we haven't had it come up.
Right everywhere else but right here.
So we did actually have one of these come back to you, uh, beginning of this year with the same problem. The R six ordinance that was approved during, the R six ordinance that was in place and whenever this was approved back in two thousand and nineteen, this did not say front setback line, it said minimum width of the lot. That has been corrected for the projects from twenty-one, but because this was approved before that ordinance was changed, we have to go by the ordinance.
Well, minimum width of the lot would be pretty clear, wherever, wherever the minimum width, it didn't talk about front or back, it'd have to be sixty foot. So that would be pretty clear, so what was unclear about that?
So they changed it to the front setback so that way cul-de-sac lots like this would still be able to meet.
When did they change that?
In twenty-one, I believe.
The ordinance was amended.
The ordinance was amended in twenty-one.
And, and now it's the, uh, well, either way, the minimum would still have been the minimum, it wouldn't have mattered. When you do the front setback, you get to the where the lots, the minimum, it's gotta be sixty foot, so there really, there's no, there's nothing unclear about that in my mind.
Has the permanent markers been set?
Uh, I, I, I.
That's what I'm saying.
The permanent marker.
Minimum's minimum, whether you call it the front setback, back setback, doesn't matter.
How were those measured, on the arch or, or?
Yes, sir, on the arch.
Point to point, okay, I'm just curious how that works.
On the arch and I'm, and did I, I hear you're right, the new ordinance allows at the setback, the width? So do we meet the new ordinance?
Well, we don't have R six anymore.
Don't have R six anymore?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, that's okay, all right.
I mean, on one hand, I do, I know, uh, I know a lot of R one, large, you know, quarter, half acre that have very small because they're on a cul-de-sac. So I get that, you know?
Yeah, and it, it was oversight, to, to be clear, I mean, uh, we're not, we're not up here for any other reason, I mean, I, but, you know, it, it was, the R six, we read differently. I think more than likely, our staff is used to measuring at the front setback line, that's how it got through, it went through the preliminary plat, it got missed. Permits were pulled, it got missed and the lots are built now, corners are set and we're trying to get the final plat done, you know what I mean?
My issue is that, I'm just gonna clarify this, then we'll hear the rest of the opposing, is that the, the original ordinance read the minimum setback is sixty. Doesn't matter if it's front or back. So the new ordinance said the front setback minimum is sixty. So either ordinance that you're reading would not cause any confusion about the width of that set, of that lot?
Sure, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not debating the rules, I'm just, I, I guess my, my point with that with all the other residential zonings, and when we designed lots in all different zoning districts, it reads one way, and so to tell you that the rules weren't clear, if they would have read it, absolutely, I agree with you a thousand percent. It's just, you get in repetition and it gets through preliminary plat and then permits and it gets built.
In another county, it might have been the back, and, and our county, it was the front, so that's.
Well, well, it's just a setback is what I'm talking about.
Right.
Lot width is typically the set, the building envelope, right? And so that's.
I'm with you.
A- anyway, I, I'm not, again, oversight on our part, we're just here because of this issue, it's, it will not happen again, I can assure you of that. Um, with any future phases here.
Appreciate it, thank you so much, I think, I think we understand. Anyone else tonight speaking in favor or against this variance request? Anyone speaking, anyone else in favor or against? All right, you seem no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing and, uh, finalize the discussion among the board members and see how they wanna move forward with this variance request.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a comment or two, um, and maybe I'm out in left field, but, um, not on this part, but I know the, um, I know Greg's company, they're good, they do a lot in the county. Um, got a good reputation, but it's just, uh, as far as the commissioner hat goes, um, like you say, the minimum's still the minimum. And I just don't see an exact hardship here. Um, I think we had this come up in another subdivision, I think maybe it was at Longleaf, Steve?
Yes.
Longleaf, um, they called it, I think they had to lose a lot, they ma, they made the adjustment and they, they moved on. So I just, it makes me nervous to grant a, a variance here, um, just in case, you know, it could be a ripple effect.
And we didn't do it on another one, you're saying?
We didn't do it on another one.
All right, any other question or discussion? I can appreciate the, the issue that he's raising, but I'm, I'm with you, I understand that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to approve or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny the variance request.
Motion, Mr. Deluch, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Burnett to deny the request, all in favor of denial of this request, say aye.
Ah.
Any opposed, say no. Hearing no, knows it is denied unanimously. Hopefully it won't be too much cost to reconfigure and, uh, correct that work. All right, item number, don't need the second reading, so item number twenty-one, the planning board recommends approving a request by Casey Ridgeway as agent for Herbert Neese to rezone plus or minus point six nine out of twenty-one point four seven acres located at twenty-seven forty Sand Hill Road from AR one to AR two to allow for subdivision to combine a lot. Map number three oh one, parcel number four in the first district.
Yes, sir, so the applicant is requesting to rezone that point six nine acre to AR two in order to combine with the one acre um, that has the frontage along Sand Hill Road, uh, the zoning must be the same. Uh, this zoning, excuse me, is consistent with the future land use map as these parcels are projected to be agricultural residential, as you can see there on your screen. Um, staff has reviewed the application and it meets the criteria of the current ordinance. Um, and I think this picture does kinda show a better image there of what, um, they are pulling from the larger parcel.
It'd be, it'd be a conforming AR one lot when it's done, yeah, okay. I mean, it'd be a conforming AR two lot.
It'll be a conforming AR two lot.
Two lot when it's done.
Yes, sir.
All right, any, anyone tonight, open a public hearing, speaking in favor or against this rezoning request? Anyone speaking in favor or in denial of this rezoning request? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing, have discussion or a motion from the board.
Make a motion, we approve with, uh, staff and planning board recommendations.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Floyd, second, Mr. Burnett to approve with staff and planning board recommendations, all in favor, say aye.
Ah.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, knows it passes unanimously. Uh, the second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of a request by Casey Ridgeway as agent for Herbert Neese to rezone, uh, plus or minus point six nine acres out of twenty-one point four seven acres located at twenty-seven forty Sand Hill Road from AR one to AR two to allow for subdivision to combine a lot, map number three oh one, parcel number four in the first district. Motion?
Make a motion, we approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second, Mr. Burnett to approve the second reading, all in favor, say aye.
Ah.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, knows it passes unanimously. Item number twenty-three, the planning board recommends approving a request by Terry Williamson to rezone plus or minus, uh, four out of ten acres located at four forty Wiley Road from AR one to AR two to allow for the subdivision to create a new home site. Map number four sixty, parcel number one oh two in the fourth district.
Yes, sir, so the applicant is requesting to rezone those four out of ten acres to AR two. Um, due to the acreage being below the five acre threshold for AR one, the zoning does need to be changed. Um, a sixty-foot access easement will be provided for the six acres that do not front Wiley Road. Um, at the planning board meeting on July ninth, um, approval was motioned for with the condition that, um, should further subdivision, um, be requested, it would need to come before the Board of Commissioners. Um, staff has reviewed the application and it meets the criteria, um, of the current ordinance, so if approved, it will be a conforming AR two.
Very good. Uh, applicant here tonight would like to speak in favor of this? Anyone tonight speaking in opposition, then, in favor or opposition to this rezoning request? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion from the board or motion?
Looks pretty cut and dry.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deluch, second, Mr. Kiefer to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Ah.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, knows it passes unanimously. Uh, second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of a, of a request by Terry Williams to rezone plus or minus four out of ten acres located at four forty Wiley Road from AR one to AR two to allow for subdivision to create a new home site. Map number four sixty, parcel number one oh two in the fourth district.
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deluch, second, Mr. Floyd to approve second reading, all in favor, say aye.
Ah.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, knows it passes unanimously. Item number twenty-five, the planning board recommends approving a request by Michael Morgan to rezone plus or minus five point two five acres located at, uh, two eight eight seven Rincon Stillwell Road from AR, excuse me, from R one to AR one to allow for the creation of a new home site, map number four sixty-two, parcel number thirty-five in the fifth district.
Yes, sir, so the applicant, again, is requesting to rezone the entire five point two five acres to AR one, um, to create that new home site. This home site will be, um, an additional home for family member. Um, the rezoning is consistent with the future land use map. Um, this parcel is projected to be agricultural residential, as you can see there on your screen. Um, AR one does allow for, uh, that, uh, secondary home for a family member. Um, I did put that, uh, on your staff report, uh, staff has reviewed the application and it meets the criteria. Um, it will meet the criteria of the current ordinance, shall it be approved.
Very good, thank you. All right, open a public hearing, anyone tonight speaking in favor or against this, uh, rezoning request? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion from the board.
Make a motion to approve with planning board and staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Kiefer, second, Mr. Deluch to approve with planning board and staff recommendations, all in favor, say aye.
Ah.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, knows it passes unanimously. Item number twenty-six, consideration to approve the second reading of a request by Michael Morgan to rezone plus or minus five point two five acres located at twenty-eight eighty-seven Stillwell, Rincon Stillwell Road from R one to AR one to allow for the creation of a new home site, map number four sixty-two, parcel number thirty-five in the fifth district. Motion?
Motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Kiefer, second, Mr. Deluch to approve the second reading, all in favor, say aye.
Ah.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, knows it passes unanimously. Item number twenty-seven, the planning board recommends approving a request by William Martin as agent for Ron Warmack to rezone plus or minus ten point nine acres located on Blue Jay Road from AR two to R one to, excuse me, from AR two and R one to AR one to combine lots for the development of a school. Map number four thirty-two, parcel number forty-one, map number four one four three A in the third district.
Yes, sir, so currently the ten acre track is zone R one and the point nine zero acre track is zone AR two. Um, to combine the total acreage for the development of the elementary school, all parcels will need to be zoned, um, AR one. Um, per the Effingham County Code of Ordinances and the Table of Permitted Uses, schools are permitted use within the AR one zoning district. Um, this is, uh, consistent with the future land use map, as you can see here. Um, these parcels are projected to be public institutional. Uh, staff has reviewed the application. And it does meet the criteria of the current ordinance, uh, should it be approved.
I think we need to look at this one real close. I think we need to look at this real close.
I think it's in District two as well.
Yeah, I think so.
If, uh, Dr. Ford is listening, uh, we have some serious reservations on this rezoning. All right. Is it open a public hearing? Any, um, one speaking in favor or against this rezoning request? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing, uh, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloach, second, Mr., I'm sorry. Motion by Mr. Burnett, second, Mr. Deloach to approve alternative one. All in favor, say aye.
Ah.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, knows it passes unanimously. Item number twenty-eight is a consec- is a second reading, consideration to approve the second reading request by William Martin. As agent for Ron Warmack to rezone ten point, plus or minus ten point nine acres located on Blue Jay Road from AR two to R one. Excuse me, AR two and R one to AR one to combine lots for the development of a school. Map number four thirty-two parcel number forty-one and map number four fourteen parcel number three A in the third district. Motion?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Burnett, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Ah.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, knows it passes unanimously. Item number twenty-nine, the planning board recommends approving request by Adrian Weber as agent for Ralph E. Graham to rezone. Plus or minus two acres located at thirty-five fifty-four Highway twenty-one north from R four and B three to B three. To allow for removal of a condition and new business services. Map number three fifteen parcel number eight, A and nine in the third district.
Yes, sir. So the applicant is requesting to rezone that one point zero one acre, um, that is currently zoned R four to B three, as you can see here on the screen. Um, and have the conditions that are currently placed on the B three, um, this parcel right here, uh, removed. Um, in October of two thousand and two, the Board of Commissioners approved the rezoning for this parcel. Uh, from AR two to B three with conditions that it would be only a dog training facility. Um, the applicant would like to use, uh, the commercial property for a high-end automotive restoration company. Um, along with that, they would like to rezone, um, this R four parcel right here. Um, to B three, um, to again, use for that high-end automotive restoration company. Um, this is consistent with the future land use map as these parcels are projected. Um, to be commercial and are within a development node character area. Um, the only condition at planning board that was added was that the B three zoning shall only be for, again, that automotive restoration use. Uh, staff has reviewed the application and should it be approved, the criteria of the current ordinance would be. Um, it would meet the criteria of the current ordinance.
Okay. We'll open a public hearing. Anyone tonight speaking in favor of this rezoning request?
Chairman, Commissioners, uh, my name's Adrian Weber. I'm representing, um, not only the hopefully future owner of this property, um, Commando Customs. But also, um, Mr. Graham who, um, owned property when we put in the application. Uh, this is one of those properties that's kind of been dormant for some time. Um, the larger parcel is zone R four. And I think this was at one point, um, probably the storm, uh, protection building for an RV park. And now, um, I guess in O two, it was rezoned to B three with a conditional use for a dog training facility. Which I guess has come and gone in that many years. So, um, it was being leased out for, uh, a gentleman that was building trusses. And now Commando Customs, uh, is wanting to now work and, um, bring their business to Effingham County. Um, we sold their building in Chatham County and they are a high-end automotive restaura- restorations. Uh, company that does classic cars and hot rods, um, very well known in the area. And their average job takes about twelve months. Um, you know, these are high-end vehicles, so it's, it would be low traffic for the area. They only have three to four employees and, um, they only take appointments only. So. Wouldn't have to worry about a whole lot of traffic in the area. And they plan on cleaning up the building and using the one acre lot adjacent to it. Um, put it in security fencing, which there is fencing there currently, um, and just really dress up the place. Pretty excited to be here. They live in Effingham County as well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else tonight that would want to speak in favor or against this rezoning request? Anyone else that'd like to speak? All right. I see no one coming forward. I'll close the public hearing. They re- they're combining those two lots into one new B three, right?
Um.
Am I looking at that right?
So they would have to come, um, they would have to do a site plan, um, if they, um, disturb over an acre. Or if they have to do any type of stormwater, they absolutely would have to combine those two lots. But it is not a condition of their.
I got you.
Uh, rezoning right now.
Just make, just getting the zoning alliance.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We need to take a field trip whenever, if the rezoning passes, but once they get open, we need to do a field trip.
Did you bring a sample?
All right. Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
Um, I'll just say this real quick. Um, very familiar with the property, actually been inside of the metal building. Um, it is a dirt floor. The lady who was wanting to train dogs did not want a concrete floor for the dogs' paws. So, um, always found that strange, but over the years, there's been quite a few people that's looked at this property. But I, I really feel that this is a good fit. Um, like the lady just said, um, it's high-end restoration, so obviously. It's not going to be a lot of traffic in and out of there. So I really think this is, would probably be a good fit, um, for this property. So. Interesting to see how it works out, but, um, so with that being said, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the request with staff and planning board recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second, Mr. Burnett to approve with staff and planning board recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Ah.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, knows it passes unanimously. Second reading, consideration to approve the second reading by Adrian Weber as agent for Ralph E. Graham to rezone. Plus or minus two acres located thirty-five fifty-four Highway twenty-one north from R four and B three to B three. To allow for removal of a condition and new business service. Map number three fifteen parcel number eight, A and nine in the third district.
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloach, second, Mr. Kiefer to approve the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Ah.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, knows it passes unanimously. Item number thirty-one, planning board recommends approving the application by Liberty Street Development LLC Douglas Hill. As agent for Nolan Earl Lane Junior. Request approval for a preliminary plat for West Gate Phase Two located on Earl Lane Road. Zone R five, map number four thirty-five parcel number nineteen in the second district.
Yes, sir. Samantha Easton, planner two. Um, as you mentioned, they are requesting approval for the preliminary plat for West Gate Two. The second phase is proposed two hundred and seventy-six lots, one hundred and eighty-five acres. They are required, uh, thirty-foot buffers and adjacent to the AR one and R one properties and twenty-foot buffers adjacent to Phase One. The applicant is proposing a thirty-foot buffer all the way around the perimeter in addition to a six-foot privacy fence. That was required during the, um, zone rezoning back earlier this year. Uh, staff is recommending alternative one.
Okay. Any discussion on the board?
She answered my question already, but if there's another discussion, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion, Mr. Burnett, second by Mr. Deloach to approve the sketch plan. That's what we're, that's the sketch plan, right?
Preliminary plat.
Preliminary plat, I'm sorry. Preliminary plat. All in favor, say aye.
Ah.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, knows it passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I've got to recuse myself on the next item due to a banking relationship.
Number thirty-two, okay. Clerk would note that Mr. Deloach has recused himself and stepped down from the platform for this next item. The planning board, uh, recommends approving a request by Kevin Forbes as agent for Christopher Boswell. To rezone plus or minus twenty point nine three acres located at ten twenty Old River Road from I one to, uh, is that HI?
H one.
Or H one?
HI, heavy.
H I.
Heavy industrial.
Heavy industrial.
Heavy industrial, okay, that's right. I one to HI to allow for the removal of conditions and additions of an additional industrial use. Map number three oh four parcel number five in the first district. And we'll listen to you.
Yes, sir. So the applicant is requesting to rezone that twenty point nine three acres to heavy industrial. Um, to continue the ready-mix concrete facility, um, but they would also like to add, um, asphalt operations. Um, and remove conditions from the original rezoning, uh, that took place in two thousand. Um, the conditional use to operate a ready-mix and precast concrete facility, uh, that is what was approved, uh, December twelfth, two thousand. And at that meeting, the following conditions were added, that an eight-foot berm with evergreens planted at the top. Um, work hours will be from seven AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, and no weekend work. Uh, install an evergreen buffer next to the easement coming off of Old River Road, uh, to the plant property. Install rain bird to keep roadway wet at all times and install an eight-foot privacy fence along property line coming off of Old River Road. Um, the applicant would like to remove all conditions except that, um, they are proposing a ten-foot privacy fence will be installed along the residential properties. And that the access road will be paved. Um, staff did review the application. Um, and if approved, it will meet the criteria of the current ordinance.
All right. We'll open a public hearing and see if there's anyone that'd like to speak in favor of this rezoning request.
Evening. Hey, my name is, uh, Pitch Powers. I'm here to represent, uh, Crest and Platinum Materials.
Okay.
Just, uh, want to answer any questions that anybody has about, um, what we're looking to do there and, uh, that type of thing.
What, uh, hours, so you want relief from the hours, work, work hours from seven to six, Monday through Friday? What are y'all looking for?
I mean, we'll need to operate, uh, a facility like that all the time. Um.
Twenty-four, seven?
Yes, sir. I mean, most of the concrete pours are done, uh, at night. Asphalt pours, these are asphalt placing these days. Asphalt, uh, work is done at night oftentimes to minimize the impact on traffic. Um, so really, uh, it's just a part of our business to, to operate that way.
Steve, did y'all have any complaints from the neighborhood?
We did not.
The only concern I have with being a twenty-four hour operation is that's, your mix plan is two hundred and twenty feet from the back door of these residents. Now, there is a berm there. I mean, this was approved twenty-four years ago. There's a berm there with a bunch of trees growing in it. The road hadn't been paved. I rode in there today. I mean, it's dusty, but if we hadn't had complaints, the cyclone fence and that's where the ten-foot fence would be built.
Yes, sir. And to address the dust ish, dust issue, we're willing to pave even inside of our fence and around our plant facility to minimize the dust issue. And then with noise and, and the, like, if noise was to be an issue, being that close to those residences. We've timed when we clean our trucks to daylight business hours and not, uh, early in the morning and that type of thing out of respect. For our neighbors. We want to be a good neighbor. We're, and we'll do whatever it takes to keep people happy.
How about an asphalt plant? I have no idea what kind of noise an asphalt plant, that's going to be an additional.
Yes, sir. It'll be at the very back of the property and would be, uh, beyond where the concrete plant is.
Is it any noisy? Or anybody know anything about asphalt mixing?
Does it create?
Jamie, I know you're not speaking as a commissioner, but I know you know about the stuff.
Does it create, and it does it create any odor?
Uh, no, it shouldn't create any odor, no, sir.
I think it's the berm would be my, I'm curious.
It's about, it was built years ago. It's, it's six, it's probably about six foot. And I mean, it's, there's heavy growth, but I mean, I can still, when you pull in there, you can see the back of the homes.
Could you?
Um, it's very close. My.
We'd be looking for a lot larger.
Whenever we put these, uh, we didn't do it. This was before all of our time. And I understand y'all probably don't comply now. Um, that's the reason I ask if we have any complaints. But I'm hesitant to still give you that close to homes running twenty-four, seven.
If you build an industrial-sized berm like we require, will they button up to?
I don't know if they have room. Their, their mix plan is literally right there at the front of the property.
Yeah.
And it's literally about two hundred and twenty feet to the back door.
The, the problem with the bigger berm is we'd have to, uh, clear, uh, all the trees out of the easement to build the berm. There's a pretty good size, uh, uh, buffer there right now. With the trees that are grown in between the residence property line and then the easement where our road comes in. Um, I mean, so the best, I mean, what we were thinking is to put the fence in front of that buffer.
What type of fence?
A ten-foot high privacy fence.
Just a wood fence?
Yes, sir.
And so how, how many, how many feet, how many feet of vegetation do you have?
Uh, I don't, I would guess.
Ten foot with the berm, something like that.
So, so the concrete plant that's there is the addition of the asphalt plant and the removal of the conditions.
Right.
Yeah.
But we're trying to see if.
Yeah.
Cause, cause, cause we didn't set these conditions on that back there and we, I think his, sure, the Commissioner's concern is.
This been approved, this was approved. This is the rules you play by. I don't think y'all were the origin. I'm assuming y'all bought this.
Yeah, yes, sir. To be a hundred percent forthright, we purchased this property, uh, three years, three or so years ago. We didn't, uh, realize all these conditions were there until we approached, uh, the county about adding this use there. And, um, so, uh, we're trying to, uh, make it right and allow us to use the property for the use.
If the prior owners would have put the batch plant at the back of the property, we probably wouldn't have an issue. Are y'all grinding concrete or grinding, uh, crush and run or any, anything like that, any operations like that, or is this strictly batching?
We have, uh, processed some, uh, concrete, uh, there, but I mean, we don't have to do that at that location. We can move it to, um, uh, another facility. We have another, uh, asphalt plant further south that we could do some of those operations.
What if they built one of those soundproofing fences twenty-foot high or whatever it takes to cut out some of the noise pollution? Would that be a possibility? And it doesn't take up a foot?
No, no. Like I said, if you, if we had clear pictures here.
Yeah.
If I lived in one of them houses, I'd be up here raising hell.
I would understand what it's going to be.
But, um.
And I don't know if they'd want a twenty-foot high wall.
Well, they couldn't see it.
Probably would if I, I got a concrete plant behind my back.
If it was behind the tree line.
I mean, we, we can, I mean, we're willing to entertain something different, uh, a different buffer. The berm is just.
I, I think we need to.
Maybe table it the next day?
Yeah, I'd like to table it and try to come up with something. I don't want to deny it. Y'all are operating, but, um, my hangup is the, uh, twenty-four hour operations. Maybe look at extended hours, maybe six to nine PM, Monday through Saturday, maybe. But I can't imagine living there, listening to that twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Yeah, and I, I would say that generally we, we don't run like that constantly. It's just when.
What you telling us? When things get good.
Get the calls.
Yeah, I mean. Yes, sir. Understand where you're coming from.
It could be if we table it, maybe, maybe there's a different buffer that would absorb sound, not just the dust and the appearance. But maybe there's a, you know, since you've got so much there, it wouldn't hurt to invest something in a little more of a sound barrier to, to your concern. You know, maybe.
Right.
Maybe it's not a ten-foot, maybe it's a twelve, fourteen with the sand that.
I don't want to deny it. I think we can find a resolution. I don't have it tonight, so I'd like to table this for, say, uh, thirty days and see if.
Uh, how about to the, uh, September seventeenth? Is that what the other ones were?
Next one, yes, sir.
That's about thirty days.
And so when we come back, just come prepared with a, uh.
Let's be in touch with staff and let's try to brainstorm and come up with some ideas to, to address some of these issues.
I think the sound issue is what you have more than anything else.
Right. I mean, if y'all want to operate day and night, I, I think it's going to become an issue.
Right.
And then adding asphalt, again, I don't know what kind of noise that's going to generate and, uh, breaking concrete for crush and run, that's going to be a continuous noise source.
Yeah, that, that is not our standard business either. That's an occasion, that is just an occasional thing, but yes, sir, I understand and we're, we're willing to come up with a solution to create a buffer.
Right. I'd rather do that than deny it. So, uh, let's table it.
We got a motion to table by Mr. Floyd to, uh, nine seventeen twenty-four and second by Mr. Burnett for that table. All in favor of tabling to nine seventeen twenty-four, say aye.
Ah.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, knows, uh, it is tabled to nine seventeen twenty-four. So get with staff and see if you've heard the, the commission. It's like they want to help you move forward. There's got to be a. it's like they want to help you move forward. There's got to be a way to, to compromise that.
I think we can figure something out.
Why their investment just doesn't go.
If clerk would note that Mr. Deloche has returned to the, uh, table here. I have number thirty-four. Planning Board recommends approving a request by Greg Coleman as agent for, uh, KFJT Enterprises LLC to rezone, uh, plus or minus one hundred and forty-four point oh four acres located at six six two Godly Road from AR one and R four to, uh, light industrial to allow for industrial use map three ninety, to allow for industrial use map three ninety-nine, parcel number three and three D in the first district.
Yes, sir. So the applicant is requesting to rezone the one hundred and forty-four point zero four acres to light industrial. Uh, this will be for an industrial warehouse facility. Um, these parcels currently surround a mining operation. Um, there are significant wetlands and flood plain located on, uh, parcel three nine nine dash three. Um, after rezoning, a site plan will be required to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. Uh, this rezoning is consistent, uh, with the future land use map. As you can see here, it is, um, a transitional area. Um, at the planning board meeting, Mr. Ryan Thompson did motion for approval, but he did add a condition that a traffic impact analysis, uh, be completed before the site plan is approved, uh, to define any needed traffic improvements. Um, staff has reviewed the application, and if approved, it will meet the criteria of the current ordinance.
Okay. We'll open a public hearing. Anyone tonight, anyone tonight speaking in favor?
Greg Coleman, Coleman Company. Um, Chelsea did a good job explaining it. I think, uh, some of, some of you guys, I believe we actually came before, uh, with this, uh, some time ago. Uh, there is an existing I one zoned piece of property in the middle of the two parcels that, uh, are being petitioned. Um, you know, uh, and I didn't know in there it's industrial warehouse. I'm not sure that, that necessarily the use is exactly locked down yet. But, uh, as Chelsea said, we wanted to come back before, uh, before y'all with a sketch plan, um, of exactly what we want to do. I do want to point out that, um, as she said, you know, but the bulk of, uh, the larger parcel here is wetlands. Uh, there's a very significant elevation drop. Uh, there is no plans to impact those wetlands. The elevations drop off so much that, I mean, it's truly undevelopable. Um, adjacent to the residential parcels, uh, to the, to the west of the site, um, there's almost eight hundred feet of wetlands there at the narrowest point. It's about seven hundred and seventy-five feet, um, of wetlands that would remain. Um, I think, um, just, we've done the topographic survey and just looking at the elevations here. Um, I, I don't believe any development, anything permanent parking, building, anything like that would honestly get any closer than about nine hundred feet of the property line to the west. Um, and then we've got ample room to provide the required three hundred foot buffer to the north up against Dodgson Road. Um, uh, as far as traffic's concerned, uh, access for this site would be back out to Highway eighty. Okay, um, so, and we'd be, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Access to be Highway eighty?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Have they been delineated already? What delineation?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Corps already done their part in that?
Uh, the, the Corps has not. We'll have to, we'll have to go through that, but, uh, RLC, Alton Brown has gone out and flagged the wetlands, and his delineations typically stick, especially with the elevation drop we have here. I mean, it is, it is true swamp down there. It's, it's, it's not feasible to develop, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else speaking in favor or against this rezoning request?
Sir, James Payne. I'm in, uh, Deerfield Community, or Deerfield, but the Lakeside Community. We have a park over there. We have, uh, the actual field that they play ball on. They're doing it right now. We also have a practice field, and we have, uh, thirty-eight acre pond, and the, the drain for the pond goes into that wetland. Now, they put a million square foot warehouse, whatever, back there. They're going to alter the water flow. They're going to flood them, uh, parade, uh, the practice field, the ball field. And again, this is, is, uh, it butts up to the housing area. Uh, I'm against it, sir. Uh, I know when you go out there and knock everything down and start leveling everything out and, and you want all the, all the square foot as you can to put that million square foot warehouse, but they're going to alter the water flow. And it's going to back up. Uh, we just had a bunch of rain here recently, and we know everything floods. Everything's flat down here. So when you change that wetland around, uh, then the ball, the practice field for the kids, it's gone. Uh, the ball field they play on, they hold clay in there, got the, the LED lights at night. Uh, you know, they're standing ankle deep water then when, when you alter it. Uh, I'm against it, sir.
But I just make sure I'm clear. Your objection is the water, the, the flooding that could take place if they build this, that's your objection?
They're definitely going to change the, the water flow.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's is or isn't. I just want to make sure that's your objection. It's not that it's a warehouse there or anything else. The main thing is the flooding that you're concerned about.
That's, that's the biggest concern. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, and again, you got a housing area with the, uh...
In the housing area?
Warehouse, yes.
All right. Just make sure I understood. Thank you. Anyone else tonight speaking in opposition?
Hi, my name is Sandy Reese. I live in Lakeside. Um, I oppose this for the simple reason of the traffic. We just, you know, y'all just denied the dump trucks. You've got, um, Stagecoach. Bloomingdale will not pave Stagecoach. That is a head-on collision about to happen because the road is so bad from the dump trucks. Now you're talking about putting a warehouse in here? And then down the street on the next, the next couple ones y'all've got, you're talking about a concrete plant? Um, y'all are looking at some trouble, and Bloomingdale has said they won't pave Stagecoach because they don't want effing him's people on their property. You know, that's...
And they're not supposed to be using Stagecoach, right? You're only supposed to be using eighty if the board does move forward.
No.
That's how you get to eighty?
We don't own the road. That's, that's Chad. That's Bloomingdale's, right?
Okay, so they got to use Stagecoach to get to eighty. I got you.
And then our road, Lakeside Auction, meets up. They're going to come through there. That's one of my concerns, is the traffic. You know, we just had the dump truck thing denied because of traffic. Now you're talking about warehouses and eighteen wheelers coming down our community roads. That's my concern.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Anyone else tonight speaking in opposition? If there's anyone else speaking after this, uh, lady, if you would please come forward now, that'll save us a little bit of time. Because we still have a lot of business. I don't see anyone coming forward. This will be the last one.
I'm just getting in on the tail end of this, but I'm Sandra Cook from Lakeside Farms. Again, the back part of our, um, community association backs up to this property, this hundred and forty-four acres of Julian Auction. And we do have a ball field. We have a community park. We have a lake. The road, Auction Road, is less than a mile long. It's dirt. And it, one end of it is in Deaf, in, on Deerfield Road in Lakeside Farms. The other is on Stagecoach Road. Um, what is the feasibility or possibility of closing Auction Road?
I'm sorry. I was reading back over this document. Say again, what was that, what was your question for us?
Well, I mean, it's less than a mile long. It's a dirt road. One side of it is nothing but the Auction Horse Ranch.
Are you asking about, can we close that road?
Yeah, it's, it's just like a, a connector road is all it is.
We couldn't, we, we can't consider that tonight. That's something you could bring to staff, and they could bring back a, uh, the, you know, the requirements to close it legally and so forth, but that's not for the discussion on this issue tonight. This is a rezoning.
Okay, I understand.
But is there a possibility? I guess there's a possibility in the future.
Yeah, there could be. I don't know, but we have to, that's another issue. Get staff to give us a recommendation and look at...
It's going to create traffic problems.
You'd have to send out some information to all the residents. Everyone has to have a public hearing on that to close the road. So that's a whole different issue for us to, to consider. It's possible. We've, we've never been as close.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, seeing no one else coming forward behind her like we requested. And, uh, we'll have discussion on the board.
I've spent some time back there with the, the current owners. There was a hodgepodge of businesses operating back there from dump truck companies to letting the people park trucks, tires, just, it was a mess back there.
Looks like it was a mess. I see all that big open area.
Going in and cleared up that whole piece of property. Um, as far as the flooding, there's a, where they've dug the pond out, there's enough retention in that pond existing to, to stop any flooding to come over into, uh, Deerfield, um, or that, that Lakeside Farms. Uh, as far as traffic, I mean, they're currently mining, and those trucks are coming out Stagecoach currently. Um... I don't think they're using Deerfield. I think those are people just slipping through occasionally. Um, most of that area is going to end up being industrial. All these landowners are trying to work together currently to get access onto the parkway, and I think at some point in time, they will be able to get that. I've discussed with the owners, their issue with Bloomingdale and the use of that road is on them. We have nothing to do with that. It's in our future land development plan, future, what is it, land use plan?
It's a land use policy plan now. We're trying to get it approved for it. Yeah.
Um, and I can't imagine anybody going there building a neighborhood. I don't know of any other use it's fit for, honestly.
Well, I like, I wouldn't mind addressing one concern the constituents had is that if you build a warehouse which you have non-permeable surface, it's got to go through the, uh, is it Georgia soil and water? They cannot have more than, was it ten or fifteen percent of the water that's leaving the land now? Anyway, it's a very low percentage after you build this building. They have to design retention...
Any more than currently.
Right, right. So whatever, whatever's currently leaving that property and going into the wetlands, you can't even put more water in the wetlands than is going other than that ten percent or whatever it is. And so you, zero, okay, zero. That's even tighter than I thought.
A motion is the flood damage prevention and storm, local stormwater design.
That's part of the conditions, because you have to do that, that, to just give you some comfort on that ball field thing. If the Corps or the Georgia, whoever, it's not, not us that reviews these plans, if, well...
It is, it is the county engineer that reviews this local stormwater.
But you got to, isn't there the Georgia that reviews at some level on this? Michael Land District, come tell us. Because my understanding is, when they get through, the wetlands cannot be impacted and the water cannot be leaving to go into this property. They have to show that or they can't build.
Uh, Mr. Jarrett, county engineer, um, so for stormwater, the county, we reviewed that. Um, as far as impacting the wetlands, that's something that would have to get reviewed by the Corps of Engineers. So that, that part is true, and then there's flood plain on this, uh, property as well. Um, so, um, you know, the developer would have to show that they're not impacting the flood plain. There'd be no rise to the flood plain, um, that's there. But as far as the, um, stormwater, um, there's zero flow, um, proposed. It has to match what was there existing today.
Okay.
Um, like you said, and that's, that's something that the county does review.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Yep.
Yeah, just want to make sure that, if the board should move forward, that decision will, cannot impact the flooding on the ball fields and others. They have to build to a standard that would not impact that.
One other thing I want to say, this is the group that came in and was willing to pave the road. They want to be good neighbors. I've, we've never had another developer come in and willing to put their money on a public road. Um, so I'm sure they would be more than happy to work with Lakeside as a good neighbor to make sure nothing impacts that ball field.
Well, the biggest thing, like he's told, my, even if they built a retention pond.
There's a, there's a...
Okay, you don't know. You saw the storm that just came through, okay? I might wash fourteen inches of water out of my pool.
Yes, sir, but, um...
Okay, so you can kind of understand, you can't predict that he's going, I think you, I don't know who personally...
Yeah, he can. Let, let our engineer answer that for you.
But I mean, I don't know how big of a retention pond is he going to allow for that?
But that's what he gets paid to do.
I understand.
Mr. Jonathan?
Can you predict that? Because I, I can't. And, and what we're worried about, man, I said, we just spent a lot of time, money on the ball field. It's been a hydro for years. And we've got it, uh, we got two teams that come in and play twice a week. Uh, one good flood and everything we've done is moot. You know what I'm saying? I mean, left field would be gone.
All right, let, let Jonathan answer that question, because we got, we got, still got a lot of business to do tonight. Mr. Jonathan?
Yeah, Jonathan Holm, county engineer. So again, um, you know, whatever development that takes place, I mean, there can be no impact. You know, the idea is that whatever you are proposing is not going to impact it hydraulically. Um, so whatever's existing today there, that's what they'll have to make sure that they're doing at the end of the day. So, I mean...
And what's already been delineated, and that's, in the flood plain maps, is the hundred year rains and so forth. So you're looking at the maximum water that could fall in a hundred year rain or something?
Well, so, I mean, it, it, for a warehouse, um, you know, there, there's different criteria that they have to design for. Instead of our local design, uh, stormwater manual that we have here, and...
Sure.
Um, that'll, that'll be something that takes place during the development planner view, um, side, um, once they get to that point, so, um...
If something comes along and fills this pit with water till it impacts this lakeside, we got bigger problems than y'all's ball field, I promise you.
Okay. All right, very good.
Because there's a huge pit back there that I'm sure is going to be used for retention.
Oh, I think we've actually...
I, I understand what he's doing.
We need to move on. I appreciate it.
I get all that. My biggest thing is, you just spent point fifty kids and their parents because that ball field just washed away. And the other thing is, we're back with traffic as well. They're not going out Stagecoach Road. I've been on it at the suicide mission. They're going to come through our neighborhoods.
Got you. Appreciate your comments.
Can somebody point out, where, where's the ball field in reference to this property? Is it this screen here?
Uh...
Is it right here?
It's further left.
And then over and to the outside of where we've been...
Yeah, I'm not sure I have it.
Back up to this property?
Come on.
And, you know, I'm a more...
I don't know how to get it.
You gotta go, you're gonna have to zoom it out.
It's li, it's directly below their lake on the water.
Right, that's not even in the screen is what I'm saying.
It's not on that screen.
I don't have it.
No, over, it's, it's right there. That six, um, what is it, the two, the three sixty-two? That property on East Deerfield, that property in our, um, access, backed up to our ball field.
All right, can, can you pull it up or not?
I can, yes, sir.
All right, she's going to pull it up. Just remind everybody, we're out of the public hearing. Now, this is the board to...
Yeah, it's not, this...
I want to answer your questions, though. So this is the board's time. So if you want to see it, she'll pull it up for you. If you need to see that before you enter a motion. Nothing like everybody looking at you, is it, Chelsea?
Next to the pond.
So, no, go, go down just a little bit.
She, she's going, she's going to show us, ma'am.
Directly?
See the lake?
That peninsula, the south little peninsula.
The little clearing area right there, that's our ball field.
And where's the property we're talking about?
Down there, right there.
There.
See how it's, you got...
Yeah, thirty-seven, forty-five.
Yeah, okay, we, we got it. We're, we're clear. All right, I'm going to call for a question on this discussion and entertain a motion.
I make a motion we approve with, uh, staff and planning board recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Deloche to approve a planning board and staff recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. All right, then that moves us to the second reading, consideration to approve a second reading of a request by Greg Coleman as agent for KFJT Enterprises LLC to rezone plus or minus ten acres located on Godfrey, Godly Road from AR one and I want to, uh, heavy industrial to allow for heavy industrial use, map number three ninety-nine, parcel number three and three R in the first district.
Make a motion we approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Burdette to approve the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously, and the next two items have been postponed to nine three. So that completes our planning board hearings.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven, they're still good.
Yeah, we still got one more.
Yeah, but he just said...
I might have read the wrong thing there.
I thought some of them were...
Thirty-eight, thirty-nine, we pushed.
The way you read it was parcel three and three R when it should have been three and three D, and then...
Yep, okay. So let me change that. So does everybody understand the second reading was for three and three D, not three R? And it was the light industrial from A, AR one. I read, I read the wrong, I read thirty-seven instead of thirty. Let, let me go ahead and read it, and I'll clarify it this way. Um... So the second reading is consideration to approve a second reading of a request by Greg Coleman as agent for KFJT Enterprises LLC to rezone plus or minus one hundred forty-four point oh four acres located at six sixty-two Godley Road from AR one and R four to light industrial to allow for industrial use. Map number three ninety-nine parcel number three and three D in the first district. And Mr. Floyd gave the motion for the proven second reading. And you're still good?
Yes.
And Mr. Burdette gave the second, for the second reading, you're still good? And then all in favor, say aye again?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. And it passes unanimously. So I apologize, I went down to the, that wrong one. Okay. So now we're at thirty-six. Got my notes off on the wrong grounds. All right, thirty-six, planning board recommends it, uh, denying a request by Greg Coleman as agent for KFJT Enterprises LLC to rezone plus or minus ten acres located on Godley Road from AR one to I, and I want to heavy industrial to allow for heavy industrial use. Map number three ninety-nine parcel number three and three R in the first district.
Yes, sir. So again, the applicant is requesting to rezone that ten acres to heavy industrial, uh, for a concrete plant. Um, as you can see on the zoning map, the three ninety-nine dash three R is currently industrial. Um, and that small triangle piece underneath of it that is, um, AR one, they would also like to include that, um, as heavy industrial, uh, for that concrete plant. Uh, right now, this site is currently used for gypsum production. Um, that use will cease, um, and the applicant again would like to replace it for the con, replace that use for a concrete plant. Um, as you saw before with the last item, uh, this rezoning is consistent with the future land use map as these parcels are projected to be transitional. Staff has reviewed the application, um, and if approved, it will meet the criteria of the ordinance.
Okay. We're open to public hearing. Anyone tonight wanting to speak in favor of this rezoning request?
Greg Coleman, again, um, I think Chelsea did a good job explaining this one. Um, I would like to, the only thing I'd like to add to that is that the, the overall, uh, parcel here, um, the, the owners of the property do own the ninety-some odd acres, uh, to the south in Chatham County around this. It is more of the, the steep drop-off creek swamp behind there. Um, it's virtually undevelopable. It's going to be a really, you know, good buffer that kind of wraps around this property that would remain in place. So I just did want to bring that to everyone's attention. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else speaking in favor or against this rezoning request? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing, see if there's any discussion among the.
I've been on this property too. It was currently, or it was used as a dump. Our stacking drying spot for gypsum, wet gypsum coming out of ships, I think. It was a mess. They cleaned that up. Unlike the property we discussed or tabled earlier, there's nothing around this, this property. There's already a good buffer there, trees. It's kind of tucked back in the woods and it, uh, I don't see how it would impact anybody. And the future land use map, it fits. I support it. My motion is to approve with staff recommendations with the, uh.
With staff and planning board recommendations?
No, planning board denied it.
Oh, that's a good point.
Alternate one.
Alternative one?
Yeah.
Second.
Yeah, alternative one.
Like any phone calls on it, I'm derating the forest.
Motion by Mr. Floyd to approve alternative one. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Burdette. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hena knows it passes unanimously. Uh, item number seven, twenty-three-seven is the second reading, consideration to approve the second reading for request by Greg Coleman as agent for KFJT Enterprises LLC to rezone plus or minus ten acres located on Godley Road from AR one and I want to heavy industrial to allow for heavy industrial use. Map number three ninety-nine parcel number three and three R in the first district.
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Burdette to approve the second reading. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No. Hena knows it passes unanimously.
Jamie, the calls I've been getting is from that gypsum sitting over there getting wet, smelling like, I don't know, rotten eggs over there. They, they're clean, got about cleaned up.
Are you going into new business?
We got a lot of new business. Do y'all need a five-minute bathroom?
I want to, I want to make a quick comment. Um, I've got to leave. I want to make sure y'all had a, a quorum. I've got to head to Albany. I've been appointed on a, um, economic development, transportation committee, um, by ACCG. And we're going to work with the legislatures through the upcoming session. So I think it'll be pretty cool. Um, Lee, can I make a comment on a future item that's in my district on new business or is that
I'm gonna take it up.
breaking the rules?
Is it on tonight?
Yeah.
We'll just take it up right now before you leave.
We'll do that.
Okay, um, it's on, it's the item for the, uh, annexation for Guyton. I think it's the.
It's near the end, isn't it?
Yes, it's one of the last items.
Somebody spots it for, here it is. Item number twenty-two?
Yeah. We have danced all over this agenda, haven't we?
We have. I'm trying to circle the ones we've done, so hopefully I won't screw this up. Item number twenty-two, we're going to go to that if you're following the current agenda. Consideration to acknowledge a petition of annexation as presented by the city of Guyton for a property located on Bredingham Road, map number two seventy-one parcel number tw- twenty-five C in the third district. Can our staff find that one?
Yes, sir. We received this annexation request from the city of Guyton. Their intent is to hold a public hearing on this item on September the tenth. The property is currently zoned AR one and the will be rezoned to R one into the city if, if approved.
It is contiguous?
It is contiguous.
Okay. All right. This is not a public hearing, so any, you got some comments you want to make on it, bud?
I was just gonna say it was contiguous. Uh, I mean, it seemed pretty straightforward to me. I, I didn't see any reason or do not see any reason, um, to deny it or question it. It seemed pretty straightforward.
Yep, it's contiguous. I agree.
I agree.
Your motion?
So with that being said, I will make a motion to, uh, approve the annexation request.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette to approve the annexation request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hena knows it passes unanimously. You're gonna dismiss? All right, if the clerk would just note that Mr. Deloach should be, travel safe, bud.
Yeah, man, thank you.
Um, is, uh, leaving the platform? We still have a quorum though, so we're good. And we are going back to.
Can we take a quick bathroom break?
Have a commissioner needs a bathroom break. If y'all could hustle, that would be great because I know staff is, is anxious to take care of the business. Five-minute break. Eight-thirty-eight.
I'm sorry.
I need you to move that to last.
Are we going to go back into a regular session?
Yeah.
Got a lot of business.
We've got to be careful.
And I think we need to go to item number three, which is going to be a public hearing. Should that have been done at six o'clock, too? Okay, all right. This is a public hearing and approval of resolution twenty-four dash oh three oh to levy the 2024 taxes, the county millage rate certification. This is the PT thirty-five computation of the millage rate, PT thirty-two, and the 2024 appeal certification.
Good afternoon, Mark Barnes, Finance Director. Y'all do have a copy of this presentation that was set on your desks earlier tonight. This is the 2024 millage tax levy adoption, and we're going to dive right into it. So this right here is the schedule that we used to advertise the levy, and the yellow highlighted number down there in the bottom right is the proposed millage rate this year for the main county M and O property tax rate. And that rate is five point five nine six, which represents the full rollback. That's a decrease of zero point three point four three mils compared to last year. And this is the fourth consecutive year that the, we're proposing a decrease in the county M and O millage rate. You can see, starting between twenty to twenty-one, it decreased in the twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. This is the full rollback as calculated in the PT thirty-two point one forms that's in your packet. And what that basically means is the rollback rate is a calculation that looks at the price inflation of existing homes, and it reduces the rollback rate to kind of offset that increasing value. So that in aggregate across all homes, it's a, there's no net increase in the tax bill related to price inflation. The, the net increase you do see down there in the revenue at the very bottom right-hand corner of this is basically the increase that is attributed, attributed to new construction. And so talking about the PT thirty-two point one, this is that form. Here in this column right here, I don't know if y'all can see my cursor, but on the left, the 2023 digest, that net digest number down there, that is last year's digest, and then we have the additions for the 2024 digest. The first column is the reassessment of existing real property, that's price inflation. And then the column next to that are other changes to the taxable digest, and that's basically new construction. And so we can kind of see this year that the total increases to the digest are roughly split equally between price inflation and the new construction. So the rollback rate is calculated here kind of down towards the bottom of the page. And that rollback rate takes that reassessment of existing property value increase and converts it to that millage rate decrease of point zero or zero point three four three mils. And that brings it to the five point five nine six proposed millage rate for this year. This here is just a recap of the individual property classes within the digest and how they've changed. Residential is, you know, changes by fifteen percent this year. The, the only thing I want to point out here is the commercial decrease is mostly due to last year, we had some businesses fail to apply for the freeport exemption on their inventories. And this year, they made sure they did that. And so that's why last year, we saw a jump in commercial, and this year, we do see a slight decrease in commercial because of that. This is a comparison of tax year 2023's levy rates compared to what's being proposed here for the board tonight for the tax year 2024. The, the county M and O rate is going down by zero point three four three mils. The, the other rates are staying the same, and then the education rate, which is set by the school board, is proposed, and they've already actually had their meetings and have adopted this, to go up by one point five four three mils. And here, we kind of see a breakdown of the different various millage rates that make up a property tax bill for someone in the unincorporated part of the county. And we see the, the blue part there is the county M and O, that's the main rate that the county does the majority of its service delivery on. And then the large brown one is the sixty percent figure there is the school M and O, which is, of course, controlled by the school board. And then that's the presentation. This is the levy that's in your packet that the board will be voting on tonight. And it has the rates that we just mentioned, plus the, the special service districts down there. For the three new industrial districts are listed down there at the bottom with the one point four four three miller rate. And staff recommends alternative one to approve the levy and approve the tax forms to be transmitted to the state.
All right, we'll open a public hearing and see if the, the public has any comments or questions about the millage rate. And while they're seeing if anybody wants to come forward, just highlight a couple of things that Mr. Barnes already shared is that you'll notice we do have a slight increase, too, to our industrial districts. People constantly talk about that the industry needs to pay for the roads that they damage. So they're paying another one point four three mils over the county millage to help us with roads and maintenance of, of the, of those industrial areas. There is a rollback based on the property values of current properties that we had before. So that, on the average, no constituent should, who, whose property was reevalued should get a increase from that, from the county side, not where others have increased their millage. For the most part, there's some small nuances to that. So we continue to roll it back, about two mils since two thousand twenty that we have rolled back. And we hope as we grow and put the cost on industrial and development, that we can continue to roll the, the millage rate back. That we have not stopped doing that, I hope. Does anybody from the public have any, we're in a public hearing before I close it, want to make any comments? I really appreciate this board working really hard to keep the millage rate, the lowest millage rate of the coastal region. It was eleven, twelve counties. I believe our property taxes continue to be near the bottom, if not the lowest of all twelve counties that we are partnering with. Any, any discussion? If not, then I'll enter a motion to approve the resolution twenty-four dash oh thirty.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash zero thirty.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Kiefer, second, Mr. Floyd, to approve the resolution as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, we have our millage rate set. Item number four is another resolution, consideration to approve resolution twenty-four dash oh twenty-three to set the 2024 fire fees.
Yes, sir. During budget season, we did discuss how currently, fire fees cover about half the fire department's budget. The remainder of their budget is funded from other sources. This new fire fee is kind of a small incremental step towards fully funding the fire department out of those fire fees alone. Also, it does have some structure changes slightly with the multifamily. There used to be multiple tiers for the multifamily homes, and now that's kind of been eliminated and simplified. Staff recommends alternative number one to approve the fire fee for 2024.
There's a, and I think I raised this question last year, so I don't know if we still need to think about clarifying this. There's a point oh three per square foot. What does that mean? Is that HVAC square foot? Is that garages? Is that porches? Is that?
Good.
Is that open to interpretation?
Whatever the, you know, tax assessor.
Well, the tax assessor puts the square footage of porches and garages and everything. So, you know, my thought, it should be everything under a roof. But it doesn't say that. I'm, I'm just wondering if we need, do we need, I think I raised this last year, that it's confusing to me when we say square foot, but what square foot?
Well, I think the, the issue is the ability for the tax assessor to calculate it out. That, you know, that certain, let's say, open sheds, pole barns, that sort of thing. They're not calculating that square footage in their assessments. And so they are simply doing a, a, a formula based on the heated square footage that, that they're charging for. I mean, it, it could, we could include barns and pole barns and all that, but I think.
I'm talking about porches and garages. For instance, in the, in the residential, on a permit, it specifically says later on the fees HVAC square foot. This doesn't say that.
Okay.
I, I just don't know.
That's easy because you actually, they have plans they're reviewing, so they can figure out those exact square footages.
So what, what is, what's the fire fee plans?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know. I'm just, we're throwing that out there.
And if we, we could approve it, and I, I just think this still needs to be cleaned up, so it's, you know, I could see another department coming in saying, well, that didn't include porches and garages. And I can see somebody say, well, it does include porches and garages. And somebody else say, no, it's just HVAC. I could see you getting different rates because somebody puts in a different number, and so.
What are our other sources of funding currently?
The largest one is the, is the insurance premium tax. We assign that, those funds solely to fire. Then for capital projects within the fire fund budget, we, and for fire trucks, we, we do use SPOLOST. And then periodically, we'll have, uh, excuse me, uh, transfers from the unincorporated special tax district as needed.
So what, what balance are we trying to achieve here? I mean, things are going up and up and up and up. I'm paying a heck of a lot, everybody else is paying a heck of a lot. What, man, where, where does it stop? We're, we're doing this every year, and it's, everybody's bills are getting bigger and bigger.
Well, on the, on the special tax district, I mean, on the, on the fees, what we're trying to accomplish is, which is generally what our neighbors do, which is that the fees actually fund their operations. We're nowhere near that.
Solely from the fees.
Yeah, solely from the fees.
Other counties solely fund?
Oh, yeah. So like, I'll use the example of Bullock, which is about, about how much more than ours? Double, triple? Yeah, so they operate, they operate on a millage, so they're easily double ours. Ours have traditionally been very low, but we also know that folks, you know, that, that if you want to try and bring them, like we did with water and sewer, to a level where, of sustaining, that you need to do that incrementally, not all at once.
Our industrial is going to help out a lot with this as we're growing.
Yes, because it's, because they're charged on square footage.
Right.
And, and just, I don't have a problem with the fee. For example, a two thousand square foot house would be about two-ten, you know, for the year. That's pretty cheap to make sure my house doesn't burn and life and them, so I'm a problem with the fee. I just, I just don't want it to be interpreted different by who's putting the numbers in.
Right.
Yeah.
And kind of for reference, you know, in Bullock County, last year, a, a home valued at two hundred and fifteen thousand had a fire fee of two twenty-six. And so that's lower than the average home value of Bethlehem, which I think was like three hundred and thirty thousand or so.
If it, a two hundred, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar house?
A two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar property had a two hundred and twenty-six dollar fire fee in Bullock County last year.
That probably be about eighty bucks, based on our fees on the square footage that builds. So we're, we're, we're low, I don't, I just, I'm going to suggest we move forward, but I think that needs to be cleaned up in the future. You can come back even with an amendment to define that square foot, because you define it in other fees, just don't define it here.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay? Is any other questions on the fire fees?
Make a motion to approve alternative one, alternative one.
I'll second.
Trying to see if I had any other questions.
No, I'm sorry. I'm getting punch struck.
I'm sorry. I got, I got one more question. Who made the motion? I'll note that, though.
I made one for a second.
Mr. Burdette made the motion, and Mr. Floyd seconded. Multifamily per structure. We had this question, too, several years ago. Per structure, if there's six units in a structure, is it one fifty for six units or one fifty per each unit in the structure?
Well, we're doing it by, we changed that this year, Mark, right?
Yeah, it's just per structure, not one fifty. So the, the tiered structure that we had previously, where if they had one to four units, it was a hundred and twenty per structure. And if they had five or more units, it was eighty per structure for the base fee. Now it's just a flat.
You're doing one fifty per.
Now it's just per square foot.
Well, we had, I, I just don't know why a resident pays one fifty plus three. And if I'm buying a condo or renting something, and my, my unit is the same size as the house, I'm paying less.
No, they're, they're the, they're the same now.
No, not per structure or per unit. So if you had four units, four fourteen hundred square foot units, all four of those are paying one fifty together.
Okay.
Right? That was the issue I had when I first came on the board, is we had sixteen units in one structure paying the same price as one, remember that? And I said, man, we can't do that, and that's why they broke it out.
I think that's probably an error in our wording. I think we, we meant to put unit in there, and so.
I'm, I'm all over that, if it's per unit, is that what you understood, too?
Yeah.
Can we make that adjustment tonight, then, with the motion? Would you accept that under multifamily and commercial, the same thing, right? It'd be per unit?
Yeah, I guess.
Because you could have, you could have a shopping center, and they're going to pay four hundred dollars for a shopping center versus.
I agree.
So y'all agree it should be unit? All right, I'm going to ask Mr. Burdette, would you accept the motion to approve with the language that multifamily is per unit and commercial is per unit?
So moved.
And the second, Mr. Floyd, you accept that as well?
Yep.
All right, now I'm good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously.
And I agree with Mark. I, I think that was the intent. That was.
Yep, but I might have just saved us thousands of dollars as the staff starts going per structure. I don't know, but these would be clear. All right, that was item number four. Item number five, consideration to approve resolution twenty-four dash oh twenty-two to set the 2024 sanitation fees.
Yes, sir. The, the waste services contract does have a built-in inflationary increase each year. Though during the recent years of high inflation, there were some mid-year increases in addition to that one that were charged to us. Last year, we kept the sanitation fee the same, so this increase will be the first one that we've had in a couple of years. With this fee, we do expect the sanitation fund, which is an enterprise fund that stands alone separately from all of our other accounting funds. We expect it to be fully self-sufficient this year, and basically, break even is the intent with this. There is a structural change to the sanitation fee this year. In prior years, the, the people that would buy secondary carts, which was, you know, a minority, but kind of a significant minority of customers, if they bought secondary carts that would flow through us, the trash service provider would bill us for it, and it would be on people's tax bills. And that kind of, kind of proved to be kind of cumbersome and difficult to deal with, especially if there were errors in that. And so the new structure here has all of the secondary carts going directly, being a transaction just between the service provider and the citizen. So only the main trash bill is going to be on this fee.
So we set the fee, but they got to collect it for the secondary?
Yes.
I like that, okay. Because it gets keeps amusing, I know, for staff. Any questions, discussion?
What is the, just to clarify again, on the senior cart?
What's the senior?
Hundred dollars a year.
Sixty-two?
Sixty-two?
It is a hundred a year, and it's been at that rate for a pretty good while now.
Okay, okay.
Staff recommends alternative number one.
All right, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Floyd, second, Mr. Burdette, approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously. Item number six, consideration to approve resolution twenty-four dash oh twenty-five to amend the schedule of fees.
Yes, sir. This, this updated fee schedule includes the fire fee and the sanitation fee that were just approved. And so we will probably need to make a slight adjustment to the language on the fire fee to match the resolution that was just previously passed. But the details of these changes are in the summary section of the staff report. The most significant changes in this update are there is a summary organization of the, the recreation league and rental fees for the facilities. And the development services did convert fees to be square footage-based. For the water fees, the city of Savannah has increased the charges to us by three point three percent this year. And so this increases our rates to reflect that three point three percent increase. Staff recommends alternative one to approve the proposed amendment to the schedule of fees.
And Tim, this is what we're working on with some, are we getting some rates on our water and sewer?
Yes, and so we, what we, what we intend to do on that rate study is just to, you know, maybe look at a mid-year adjustment. And so we wanted just to adjust this year just for the minimum, which would have been the, which would have been the Savannah increase.
I thought that's probably what we're, what we were doing, yeah, sounds good. So is there a motion to approve alternative one with also adjusting the definition of multifamily and commercial structures to units?
So moved.
Mr. Burdette?
Second.
Second, Mr. Floyd, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously. Item number seven, consideration to approve revised fiscal year 2025 UGA extension office personnel agreement.
Yes, sir. So this agreement was originally approved, I believe, back in July, yes, on the July third meeting. The budget that came from the extension office did not contain the four percent COLA for the year. We budgeted for that in our budget, but that contract excluded that, and so this just has that four percent COLA in the contract.
Very small.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve alternative one?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Floyd, second, Mr. Burdette, approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We've already taken care of number eight. So number nine, consideration to approve a warranty deed accepting the roads, utilities, and easements in the North Gate Industrial Park.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is asking for approval of the deed and right-of-way. Development Services has inspected all of the roads, the right-of-way, and the drainage infrastructure. And the county attorney has reviewed and approved the warranty deed. Staff is recommending alternative one.
Okay, any discussion or motion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd, approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously. Item number ten, consideration to approve a warranty deed accepting the right-of-way of EVM Park of Commerce.
Yes, sir. Samantha Easton, Planner Two. Staff has reviewed the right-of-ways, and the county attorney has reviewed the deed. We're recommending alternative one.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Burdette, second, Mr. Floyd, to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously. We've already handled eleven and twelve, we go to thirteen. Consideration to approve a contract with Harrison Contracting Company Incorporated for the exterior steel painting at C E M Complex.
Yes, sir. My name is Danielle Carver, Procurement Capital Projects Manager. Harrison was sent the approved purchase order from the seven-two-twenty-four Board of Commissioners meeting and requested a contract be signed by the county as well. The contract was sent to the county attorney and was approved to form. Tim signed the contract on seven-twelve to get the painter started, so this is technically a ratification. Staff recommends alternative one.
Well, since Tim signed it, I, I make a motion that he pay for it. All in favor?
Aye.
I appreciate you keeping it moving. All right, is there any discussion or motion to approve it?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd, all in favor say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, it passes unanimously. Item fourteen, consideration to approve. Item number fourteen, uh, consideration to approve change order for the Legacy Water Group for Loop B Construction Project. It's a credit of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think we ought to approve that. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve alternative one.
Most of them understood.
Second.
Mr. Burdette, second, Mr. Floyd. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing the nose, it passes unanimously. I assume we'd wanna take a credit.
Yeah, I thought so.
All right. Item number fifteen, consideration to approve change order one for the FEM County C E M, uh, gym expansion construction with Lavender and Associates Incorporated. Small amount.
Yes, sir. This change order is for tying in the sewer on the wreck wing of the addition to the manhole near the batting cages. The existing sewer main at the rear of the wreck wing is much deeper than indicated by the survey. They set it to sixteen feet. Lavender proposes a solution to run a six-inch pipe with clean outs parallel to the main. This, um, solution has been approved by Hussy Gay Bell and staff recommends alternative one.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing the nose, it passes unanimously. Item number sixteen, consideration to approve a quick claim deed related to a property exchange between FEM County and Savannah Parkway Properties LLC.
Yes, sir. These deeds coincide with a real property exchange agreement, also known as the land swap agreement between Savannah Parkway Properties and FEM County. The agreement was drafted by the county attorney and was approved at the May twenty-first, um, board commissioners meeting. Staff recommends alternative one.
Motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Burdette, second, Mr. Floyd, approve alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing the nose, it passes unanimously. Item number seventeen, consideration to approve a proposal with Johnson, uh, Mir- Marion and Thompson Incorporated J M T for right-of-way service for Low Ground Road.
Yes, sir. Staff requested a proposal from J M T for right-of-way services for Low Ground Road. In the proposal, J M T suggests two separate scenarios. Based on consulting with Thomas and Hutton, staff recommends scenario number two, scope with the not-to-exceed fee from scenario number one to cover any unforeseen, um, overages. Staff recommends alternative one.
That's the practical way to go. No doubt about it.
It is, but now, when it says appraisal, I hate to bog us down. A hundred eight parcels, the appraisal is twenty-five hundred dollars per parcel along that road?
That's the, yeah, that's the-
But I guess that's the-
That's the most frustrating part of all this and, and it's generally the one that takes the longest. Um, and there aren't, aren't, and Lee will tell you this, there just aren't many people who do this. And since there are so few people who do this, um, you know, it really drives up the cost.
Wow.
Supply and demand.
Yeah, my, my frustration not to delay this is always when we look at these things, when you get a roll lots, once you've done three or four,
They're all the same.
all you gotta do is-
Repeat.
cut and paste.
I mean, compared to a house, that's cheap. I mean, expensive.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, you're just looking at, we're buying a sixty-foot right-of-way or whatever, but whatever. That's the cost, that's the cost. Do we get competing bids? Oh, that's right, you said there's very few people that do this.
No competition.
Specialty services.
Well, that's one reason you're trying to do the, the second one, cause it could go down.
Right.
If you can negotiate.
That's the hope.
Yeah.
But that is alternative one.
So, which-
Scenario two. Scenario two, because see the-
Scenario two, but alternative one, isn't it?
Well, it's scenario two, but they're recommending it in an alternative one, so you're, you're doing-
Well, you recommend alternative one?
Right. But it's scenario two.
Right. Alternative one, scenario two.
Alternative one is scenario two. Right. I'm sorry. I'm with you. So, motion for alternative one, which is scenario two.
Make a motion for alternative one.
Motion, Mr. Burdette?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Floyd. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing the nose, it passes unanimously.
I'm in the wrong business.
It's gonna be a great road to get that done, though. That's gonna be good for our constituents. Item number eighteen, consideration to approve the purchase order, uh, S W S H B P dash oh two for Play South Playground Creators for equipment for the Sand Hill Ballpark. Ta-da.
Thank you.
Nice.
Staff requested pricing through Sourcewell for a new playground for Sand Hill Ballpark. A quote was received by Play South Playground Creators in design and, for, in, design and installation. The quote includes a discount from Play South as well as a discount for Sourcewell. Um, Burke Equipment, part of Play South, will, um, complete the installation of the playground. Staff recommends alternative one.
I was shocked at how expensive playgrounds are.
Well, I appreciate the fact that they figured in some shaded areas.
Yep.
Yeah.
These don't have that. And that's important, I think, in the future for any of our expansion or renovations.
And I think that, uh, a lot of that cost is probably in that safe floor, so we don't have liability.
I make a motion, we approve alternative one.
Motion, Mr. Floyd, second, Mr. Burdette, to approve alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing the nose, it passes unanimously. Uh, item number nineteen, consideration to approve a quote from, uh, Stryker for five power load stretchers for EMS.
This'll hurt your feelings.
Yeah. These stretchers are needed for the new ambulances that we should receive in October. Staff recommends alternative one.
I remember the first ones we did, they're like five-
These stretchers pick these people up off the ground and load them.
I guess it saves-
And drop them to the-
Saves us from being saved for bad backs. I don't know.
Nah.
It's crazy.
Motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion to approve alternative one by, uh, Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Burdette. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing the nose, it passes unanimously. Item number twenty, consideration to approve purchase order Q nine-seven-five-one dash oh-eight-two-one-two-four for replacement of three rooftop HVAC units for the jail.
Yes, sir. Three HVAC units are, they need replaced at the jail. One is quit working and the other two are only working at fifty percent. Staff requested quotes for the replacement of three RTUs for the jail and received a total of six quotes by various vendors. Davis Heating and Air was the lowest as well as best lead times for the equipment. So, staff recommends alternative one.
Question, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion for alternative one.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Burdette, second, Mr. Floyd, for alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing the nose, it passes also unanimously.
Thank you.
And then we had, uh, in addition to the agenda, consideration to approve a minor subdivision, um, final plat for the cottage loaded, cottages located on Little McCall Road, Zone R one, mat number three ninety-two, parcel number two.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Samantha Easton, planner two. The applicant is requesting approval for a minor subdivision, um, for the cottages located on Little McCall. Based upon, based on the updated subdivision ordinance, this development falls in the category of a minor subdivision, as it does have eight lots. And minors, minor subdivisions are six to nine lots. The final plat is consistent with the future land use map, as these parcels are projected to be in the agricultural residential. Staff has reviewed the application in the, and plat and meets the criteria of the ordinance if approved.
Where's this located on Little McCall Road? Is it, uh, toward Guyton from Courthouse or is it toward Rankin from Courthouse?
Uh, towards Rankin, I believe.
Toward Rankin, okay.
Yes, sir. This was rezoned back in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, somewhere in there.
Nice sized lots.
And it, maybe it's not pertinent to this discussion, but one thing that concerns me when we do lots like this, um, we know we're growing, like we know McCall Road's gonna be a probably a major road one day. This is Little McCall, I know. But you get all these houses accessing a road and one day it needs to be expanded. I just wonder if we need to be thinking about staff, yeah, access roads.
Access roads. They got it.
Remember the cuts on the main road, right?
Yes. These cuts on the main road. In a, in a rural community that's not growing at all, it's fine. But when you start having one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight cars pulling out on a road that could be fifty-five miles an hour, it becomes very dangerous. So, I think we need to look at that and as pause, maybe think about that on these minor and major subdivisions that they have access roads. Okay? But that's for another day. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second, Mr. Floyd, to approve, to approve alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any want to oppose, say no. Hearing the nose, it passes unanimously. Now, other than reports and anything else, have I concluded all the business? Have I missed anything? Steph, you've been following up. I got everything covered on the business tonight. It's kind of a long agenda. Tim, you noted anything? I missed anything?
Yeah, um, you mean-
No, I just wondered if I missed any business, cause we skipped all over the place.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm-
All the agenda is recovered.
Yeah, we're done.
All right, very good. We'll go to reports from commissioners and administrative staff. We'll start with Mr. Tim.
Yeah, I just wanna give a quick, um, update on a couple of things. One, um, there is a public open house on Thursday at five-thirty at the Clarence Morgan Gym. Um, this is the transportation master plan update. Uh, and so, um, they'll have all the maps, presentation screens and all, everything set there. Um, we are, uh, getting the word out on it. Um, also regarding the flood damage, um, we did put a list of roads on, um, that we can get at the convenience center on Courthouse Road or Recycle Way, um, that, uh, folks can dump for free. Um, we, if and when, um, we get a FEMA declaration here, um, we could, um, activate a, um, a, a debris pickup contract. Um, but, um, since we have yet, no one, my understanding in the state of Georgia has gotten one, um, you know, we cannot activate that contract. So, um, we are simply tracking it ourselves. Um, they're weighing it as it comes in, so that if the, if we do get the FEMA declaration, we, we can get reimbursement on it. Uh, but, uh, you know, we are, we cannot do the normal debris pickup, uh, until the, uh, until the president signs the, uh, declaration.
I appreciate y'all getting that, but, um, what prompted this actually was a call, I mean, I knew people over on Bluff Drive and, uh, some of these others, but, uh, the resident that actually called me was on Zitryer. His garage in the back somehow. And I talked to Jonathan to meet with this fellow about some flooding on Zitryer. And that's not on the list. So, if somebody shows up with wet carpet from a road that's not here, are they gonna still be charged or how do we handle that?
You know, if, if we've got flooding, if we miss something, um, we can add it onto the list and so-
Does anybody show up and they go, yeah, I'm on Zitryer. And they go, well, you gotta pay and we have an incident.
Right.
If it's wet carpet, I think that's a good indicator.
Hopefully, nobody would try to take advantage of us, but, uh, you know, people. But I mean, the gentleman that called me was off Zitryer Road.
Listen, if, if we would've said, eh, you know, that if it's flood-related and you don't need, you know, uh, believe me, it would've been another pickup day. You know, we had, uh, you know, six tons of, of waste. So, we can add Zitryer to this list. Um, uh, we just, we tried to track it down based on where we saw flooding.
Right.
And there could be areas, particularly in backyards, that we're not seeing. And so, we could add Zitryer.
I just don't wanna see, hear or read into our own, uh, that stupid Facebook page. There was a fight at the junkyard because we wouldn't take this guy's wet debris.
Yeah, but I can see contractors pulling the carpet out of the house and throwing the truck and then wetting it down.
Yeah, well, I mean, I can handle it.
If they're that desperate.
That's pretty low, isn't it? Yeah, that's a good thing, I would say. Just maybe, maybe put a deadline on it and think about just taking it. Wouldn't cost that much. If you've had a few people that slipped some by you, just take it to a certain date. And after that date, only the floods are areas. Something, think about that, maybe.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
All right. Any of the staff?
Yes, sir.
Steph, you got anything for us?
Um, no, the only thing I had was your E O M monthly report for July was emailed to you earlier today.
Okay. Mr. Forrest?
This is a small one, but typical is coming out of Meldrum. The stop sign we put where, uh, Meldrum Road intersects Bay is causing a bunch of confusion because it's a ninety-degree turn. People are like, why did y'all do that? What they would rather see is some, the solar speed limit signs that flashes your speed limit at each end of the town instead of that stop sign. Cause that's the complaint. It's about speeding. That stop sign, it's slowing anybody down.
Where's that stop sign at?
It, where Meldrum Road intersects Bay. It's a ninety-degree turn as it is. I mean, nobody's gonna, if they speed through there, they're going off into the woods.
Yeah, so that, that's not a speeding area.
No, it's through the town. So, we've, we've reduced the speed limit to twenty-five, but, uh, but we've got these somewhere else, I think, where it, as you drive up, it, well, the, near the schools.
Yeah.
Flashes your speed, speed limit shows twenty-five and then, uh, if they're over that, it'll flash and hopefully entice them to slow down.
Okay. We'll, we'll look into it.
On each end of-
We're, we're looking into those for other areas for the Safe Street For All grant. So, um, we're already pricing them out, so we'll see if we can find a couple.
Thanks.
We're stealing from the school either way. I'm fine.
We can take them down there from, one place on seventeen. They got a great company that does talk to them.
Oh, Marlowe, yeah. Yeah. I, I think they had them down at Marlowe and we can remove them from there. The old Marlowe.
I, I just wish, if Jimmy had an old deputy's car, that he could just park over there. It may just, it type-
He used to have it with the mannequin, I remember that.
But I get calls constantly about people speeding through Meldrum. No shame.
I got some stuff and it can wait, but I do wanna, um, we, we got a great staff, but I do wanna toot Jonathan's horn a little bit here. I appreciate you handling the Forest Haven thing with Cherry, I think is her name. I don't know if you caught that or not on the piping, it's not installed. So, I mean, her, her yard flooded out and, uh, you don't wanna, didn't wanna do anything about it, but now it's been determined, I believe, there's a pipe that's supposed to go in for the plans you've got here that's not in there. So, a good, good catch. I appreciate that. Appreciate the work.
I, I do have one other thing. I wanna recognize Clint. During this, Clint was on the phone twenty-four hours a day. He's over there quiet, but I remembered you tonight, buddy.
And like I said, I could applaud all of you. I mean, it's, it's phenomenal.
Mark, you got some good articles coming out about the, uh, Clint and the leadership there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, he did a great job.
Yeah. I heard nothing, but great comments from everyone.
Just rocking it.
Makes you proud, yeah.
I'll catch you, I'll catch you later the rest of the time.
Okay.
It's late.
Real quickly, administrative complex, it is about time for that thirty-day follow-up meeting?
Oh, it's, um, because of the rain, um, and we're, we're, eh, eh, they've had to, uh, rip out nearly all of the remaining drawwall up there and, and replace it.
Okay.
Um, so they're, they're, I, eh, we still have to have a follow-up meeting with them, but I want them to get a, I want them to get a better idea on-
Yeah, we talked about, you know, with you and I, eh, thirty, forty-five days and they're gonna meet every two weeks on everything else, but-
But I wanna, I want them to get me a better schedule based on what they have to do to get back on track from the flood.
Um, do we have the minimum flows from, from Springfield yet? Is that project still moving?
Yes, um, we do. Um, uh, they gave us some numbers on, uh, yesterday. Um, uh-
We can go over them tomorrow. I just wanna-
Yeah, they're just, uh, there's, there are more questions than, than answers.
I just wanna make sure staying on that one. And then, um, I wrote, um, what's the road? One forty-four in Richmond Hill that Ms. Beth talked about. And, uh, wanna make sure I mention this to staff, cause I'm gonna go out of town this week again. I'll be back next week. But as you're looking at that, um, undisturbed buffers, more, when I look to that, I think you'll look at the forty-foot. But I, I'd like for staff to look and see what Richmond Hill or Bryan County is doing on that one forty-four quarter. I think it's about forty-foot, but I'd like to know what it is. It looks really great. It gives an, uh, a rural feel to it. There's multi-family, there's great subdivisions all behind that stuff. You can hardly even see it. Um, but I'd like to look at wherever that buffer is and make it that mandatory for this future. And then if, if somebody clearcuts, think about the appropriate, penalty's not the word, but, um, like, if they clearcut it, maybe they gotta do forty-foot of planted, um, vegetation and a five-foot berm after that, which makes a sixty-foot. And that might make them think twice about clearcutting before they check.
I think, I think it should be punitive. I mean, I think it's all right for it to be punitive, cause the idea is to maintain it.
Yeah, and it, it-
Put undisturbed, no berm, but if they do something forty-foot undisturbed, add berm or-
Yes, that's what I'm looking at. Cause that way, if they lose twenty-foot of building, because they gotta build a berm, extra cost, they probably would talk to the, the developer saying, I mean, to the landlord, hey, if you cut all this, our deal's off, cause I'm gonna lose twenty-foot of buildup of property. I don't know. That may not even be right, but that's, that's where my mind's going. As you're looking at that, talk to other commissioners and staff and, and builders and see what, what would encourage them not to have it clear- as you're looking at that. Talk to other commissioners and staff and builders and see what, what would encourage them not to have a clear cut so we get that look of our rural community right on, okay?
Good, thank you.
I've got things, but I'll cover with you tomorrow, Tim.
Okay.
Yeah, got a few things. I was gonna bring up staff and appreciate, in addition to Clint, but everybody. I know y'all all, every, everybody jumped in, Seth and his crew, sandbags. And I wanted to catch Kristin before she left because she's been phenomenal, been phenomenal. Aside from that, Abrecord Land and Boat Dock, that's A one, top of my list. I think we can get it done a lot cheaper than a playground. I don't know, what do we need to do? What, 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 do y'all need, I know we, I know it's gonna have to be permitted.
Yeah, and so what I would, if it's gonna have to be permitted, we're probably just gonna have, we're probably gonna have to have engineer plans anyway. So we can just come up with a proposal for next meeting.
You think we'll really, I mean, because a resident that owns on the creek could get a permit, and surely they're not having engineer drawings done, right? I don't know.
And we can find out. I mean, public, I mean, generally, public, public landings are a little bit different, but, but we'll, we can find that out, so.
Yeah, but no, I mean.
Just have an answer for you by next week, and if we, by the next meeting, and if we have a, you know, regardless, we have the I D C, we can just kind of go, you know, and have a proposal.
Mainly who can get on it quick, you know, at a good price, but obviously, but. Any way I can help, let me know, because it's, you know, top of my list. The only other thing, and I've, and I know we did not permit, that it was a D O T permitted interest at the Parker, Parkers at the county line. Is that gonna change any, or is that pretty much what you see, what you get?
Well, it's tough to say, because we will say.
Still has cones and all up or did last time.
And it's because they, they informed us that they got the, that their design was, was approved and ready to go by G, by G dot. Am I have that right?
That's right.
When we did prior to C O. So we issued the C O.
Yeah.
G dot then informs us after we issued the C O that, hey, you know, that new design has not been fully approved by us. So it was too late at that point.
Yeah.
And so we, that's, that's why there's still cones there.
Okay.
Because they're still working it out with G dot on the, you know, how the overall design goes.
Will that, do we think that'll be a right in, right out?
Oh, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's just, I guess, it's just a terrible idea of a right out and merging, right? It's just a bad, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. It's, I guess, hopefully D O T can help figure it out. Yeah.
Um, yeah, so it was, you know, but, but then again, that was, you know, that was between G dot and Parkers. We, we handled the Old Augusta Road portion of it.
And that's gonna be right. That is right in, right out.
That is right in, right out, but it's a little inconvenient. No, it's, I'm sorry, at one entrance.
That's right, now you can come now.
But at, but at Leo, it is a two-way, but that will eventually turn into a right in, right out with an R cut.
That's right.
When we widen the road. So it's a, but they knew all this in advance.
Yeah, sure.
You know, when they were putting it in there, just because of the location.
So we really, we don't know exactly how that.
We, we don't know what, what G dot's issue was and what their recommended fix is gonna be.
Okay. That's, that's all I got.
And I could ask the clerk, if you go ahead, and I think everybody's got the dates down, the October twenty-fifth to the twenty-seventh. That'd be a Friday, Saturday. If we go down Thursday night, we could, but Friday, Saturday, and then Sunday morning. Is that correct? What we want to do for that retreat?
Yeah, that works.
Okay, that'll give us two full days and a half data recap and summarize points. That's the dates we talked about. Just to make sure we get those out to everybody so that we can start locking those down, okay? All right. Is there anything else other than executive session minutes? I'd have a motion to approve the executive session minutes of July sixteen, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
Sorry. Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Burdette to approve the executive session minutes of July sixteen, two thousand twenty-four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. He no knows it passes unanimously. Is there any other business for the good of the county? We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by, I think I heard Mr. Burdette, I mean, Mr. Floyd.
Yep.
To adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. He no knows we are adjournment.
You got to go boxes back.